Do we have enough? We've got five. I'd like to call to order the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board meeting for October 10th. I'd like the clerk to take role, please.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Moore. We have a quorum.
And Meyer.
Meyer. We have a quorum.
All right. Item two is authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into a construction contract with the Hanson Company, Inc., Craig Hanson owner, to build 10 single-family public housing homes and submit a waiver to HUD to exceed the housing construction cost limits to meet the lead certification or to reject the bid. The board communication number here is 11-637. Are there any questions from our board?
I have a question for our city manager as to that additional 50 percent that they want, Hanson wants to build those, I think is way out of line. I'd like to refer it back to our city manager for a, maybe to try to get that back in line with the million six that we got from the U.S. Department of Housing.
Mr. Mahaffey, councilmembers, I'm going to have Doug Romig address your questions specifically, but the item on the agenda calls for a contract amount that is 1.6 million, so it was our attempt to get within the budget, but Doug, could you kind of clarify what we're doing here on the dollar amount?
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Doug Romig, Housing Services Director. The action before the governing board is to authorize Rick to negotiate and try to execute an agreement. We have, under HUD limits, housing construction cost limits, which is one point, just about 1.6 million for these 10 homes, and we have to have a contract to meet that dollar amount. And those funds also have to be obligated by October 29th of this year, otherwise we will lose funds that we have not spent out of that replacement housing factor allocation. So, as the city manager indicated, our hope is to value engineer and get a product that is quality and will represent well in the neighborhoods within that dollar limit. And we're currently working with the architect and the sole bid responder to start those discussions.
So Doug, should council approve this? I'm authorized just up to that dollar amount. I can't exceed the budget. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
The 1.6 million is, you're saying you're going to approve the total?
The 1.6, and then if you want the lead certification, but we would bring that, we could bring that back before this governing board, which would be an increase above the housing construction cost limits. That's a separate piece based on previous request.
But there was also a comment in the blue letter, Doug, that made reference to you might go back out and rebid, that you were looking at putting a whole new RFP together?
We were looking at that option and prior, or after this communication was submitted, and we found out that any request for an extension would be denied by HUD. We did not meet their criteria to request an extension which would allow us to reject all bids and rebid. So we have to negotiate with this sole responsive bidder or not obligate those funds, and we would lose, from what's not been obligated, about 658,000 is on the table.
So we may end up doing fewer properties to stay within the budget?
Yes. Because we have, the funds that have to be obligated by the end of this month are from 2005 to 2009. We were planning to use 2010 and 2011 monies to build the 10 homes, but we have to commit to the monies that have been received by 2009, otherwise we'd lose that. So our goal is to obligate, at a minimum, those funds, so we don't lose any of this revenue into the housing agency to build these homes.
Okay. Thank you.
How much over are they, Doug?
The initial bid was 800,000 over. The bids came in at 2.42, and we had a estimate of about 1.6, architect estimate. But a couple of factors for that. One is that they, we do require Davis Bacon wages and benefits as a part of that, and that impacted the number of people that responded to the bid. A lot of residential developers do day labor, and they don't pay full wages and benefits, and they haven't dealt with Davis Bacon. And the other aspect that kept some of the bidders out was the 10 percent bonding requirement based on approximately $2 million budget. They typically don't bond at that high a level for residential development, so we ended up with more, well, with one commercial company responding to the RFP.
Question to you is, the reason that it's so much over, is it the lead requirements or the, try to meet that spec, or was it going to be over anyway?
No, this is, the lead requirements are not a part of the base bid. That was under the regulations by HUD. We, the base bid has to meet the housing construction cost, which is 1.6 million. The bid response was 2.4. The housing construction cost limits can exceed that base dollar amount of 1.6 million, but we have to apply for requests to exceed those limits because of the energy efficiency components. And that's part of the request and the action for the city manager to authorize submitting that letter and that request, once we get the base bid down to the housing construction cost limits established by HUD.
We have some reason to believe, because there is some precedent set in a local city bid, that the lead could come in underneath the conventional design.
Potentially.
Don? Where's Don? Talk to Don about it.
So we just want to be able to negotiate and explore those opportunities to get these housing construction cost limits within HUD's criteria, or HUD's limits, so we can move forward with the development in the spring. And we will be getting ready to issue demolition contracts here shortly to obligate those funds.
The mayor's point's a really good one. I just want you to know and everybody to know, we will look at that. If lead is a way to reduce the price, that's great. But to Mr. Mahaffey's initial question about the cost, I just want to be clear, this authorizes up to 1.6, which is what we have available from HUD. We cannot exceed that, so if you go forward, we do have to cut the costs, and I think that's essentially what Doug's asking us to do.
Correct.
Just one other question, because I would support Bob if he wanted a delay, but I'll tell you for what it's worth, I feel pretty good the way they laid it out. I learned a little bit that we're putting a cap on it. But are the rules of the 10 percent bonding and the, or the bond and so forth, are those HUD rules, or are those rules that we set as part of the bidding process?
The 10 percent bonding is actually a city policy, which is more restrictive than the federal policy, which is 5 percent.
Okay.
And we go with the more conservative approach in putting the bid specs together.
All right. I don't know how you want to handle it, but I'll support.
Well, we'll move approval up to 1.6 million and refer it to the city manager for, try to mediate the, down to that point.
Excellent.
Anybody in the audience to speak on this item? Seeing none.
Seven yes.
All right. Could we have a motion to adjourn the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board?
Move.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We sit adjourned. We'll start our city council meeting in a minute. We have one special presentation here.
Did you ask?
This is National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and we've got Marlon. It's Marlon McKean. Marlon, come on up. Marlon, tell us kind of what's going on, and we've got a special proclamation.
Well, goodwill missions to empower individuals and families with barriers to independence through training, education, and behavior programs. Last year, Goodwill provided programs that were still to 1,045 people. One of these people went through the training program, got dropped out of the community, became a independent, and was attacked, beaten, killed. The Ability One program, which provides services to the federal government, which means the federales in the courthouse have to answer the phone at the switchboard. So if you get called there and get rallied correctly, we did.
All right.
And if you call there and don't get rallied, well, it's a training opportunity for us. But it's 34 individuals that provide services to the Ability One contract, provide services to the federal government in Des Moines, Iowa.
So, October is our month, has been designated by the United States Congress as the National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And whereas Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 and the laws against discrimination promote independence, empowerment, and quality of life. And whereas the city of Des Moines recognizes the demonstrated benefits of a diverse workforce and experiences every day the valuable contributions of its employees with disabilities. And whereas we must continue to work for a community where all individuals are respected for who they are, celebrated for their abilities, and encouraged to realize their focal potential and achieve their dreams. And whereas through the Association Ability One Program, Goodwill Industries of Central Iowa provides employment opportunities to 34 people who are blind or have other disabilities, enabling them to lead more productive and meaningful lives, provide support for their families, and develop skills necessary for long-term employment. And whereas the city of Des Moines recognizes the important contributions of Goodwill Industries of Central Iowa to Des Moines and its citizens, now therefore, I, the mayor, on behalf of our city council and our citizens of Des Moines, who hereby proclaim the month of October 2011 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in Des Moines, Iowa, and hereby commend all persons who are committed to work toward enhancing employment opportunities for people with visual and other severe disabilities. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, you won.
Let's give him a break. You got it? All right. All right. I'd like to welcome everybody to our October 10th city council meeting. Prior to the start of our meeting tonight, we're going to have a quick invocation by our own city council member Christine Hensley, and we'd ask, for those who would participate with us, we'd ask you to stand at this time, please.
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to read from "Living Inspired." "Living inspired doesn't mean that life is perfect. Quite the contrary. Living inspired means that even while in the midst of personal or business-related turmoil, I'm grateful not for material things, but for simple things like the ability to love and be loved. Living inspired means feeling blessed for things that most of us take advantage of every day, the gift of eyesight, hearing, voice, touch. Living inspired is a feeling of blessing, even when things of my day don't seem to be going my way. Living inspired is a choice."
Prior to the start of our meeting, I also want to have the city manager quickly update us on the upcoming town hall meetings. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, I think you're all aware that the city once again faces a shortfall in our budget. In order to help the city figure out how to deal with that particular problem, we have scheduled three town hall forums in order to solicit input and help from the citizens of Des Moines. And I wanted to announce at this time, although there's been some publication already, that we have three meetings set up. The first one is October 17th, which is a Monday at 6:00 P.M. The second one is October 26th, Wednesday, at 6:00 P.M. And the third one is October 27th, a Thursday, also at 6:00 P.M. All of the meetings will be at the Botanical Center. Everyone is urged to attend. And two particular comments I want people to know. One is that we will have Spanish-speaking interpreters in the meeting, so those of you who want some help in that regard, we will have folks there to help interpret what's going on. And secondly, those who need transportation assistance are also encouraged to call DART. We've arranged with DART to avail folks in the community of that kind of assistance in terms of transport to and from the meeting. There was a very good article in the Des Moines Register Metro section today which summarized what I just said, and the information I provided is also on the city's website. And in addition, we've also sent out notices to all of our neighborhood associations and boards and commissions and a variety of others about the meetings, and we hope that people attend. And mayor and council, that's simply a point I wanted to make and make sure that information is available to the public.
All right. Thank you. Let's begin our meeting. We'll call it to order and ask the clerk to take role, please.
Henry.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Mahaffey.
There.
Hensley.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. I might comment at this point that consent agenda items changed to another date have been withdrawn. 4B, 4P, and 4Q, those inspections are incomplete, and regular agenda items, 29 to 43, item 37 is corrected, and to continue to November 7th at 5:00 P.M. And 39A2 was added, a final consideration in the ordinance above, and it was asked by the aviation director. That one will require six votes. So those are the changes to the agenda this evening. Any others? Anybody has?
I'll move.
Okay. Yep. There was a hand back. Somebody had a question?
I'll answer that.
Okay. Item three is approving the consent agenda. Those items are 3 through 28, and we will take these as one routine item, and it will be enacted as a roll call item unless somebody, either a council member or a member of the audience, pulls the items to be discussed or somehow additional information added separately this evening. Item 4C, Mrs. Hensley wishes to speak. Item five, councilmember Moore and I vote no. Are there any other items? Consent 3 through 28. Sir?
24.
24. Any others? All right. Seeing none. Could we have a motion for the balance? It's been moved.
Seven yes.
All right. Item four is approving the alcoholic beverage license applications for the following. C is the Pelican Club at 208 Third Street. It's a C liquor license. Mrs. Hensley.
This is a license for the Pelican down in Court Avenue, and I'm going to look to legal for some direction on this. I guess in my mind, there would be some issues about good reputation here as to whether or not we should move forward, and I'm extremely sensitive about it based upon what's happened elsewhere in the community right now. So my question would be, when we get reports regarding individuals making application for liquor licenses, that they have obviously some history, can we set it up so that it's on a probationary period, a six-month? I know we did for the bar over on the east side. That was a 120-day period, but it seems like typically these are the ones that come back to create problems for us, and if we could set it up so that it would be maybe a six-month probationary, we would have a right as a city to request additional information. They've had any violations whatsoever during that period, we could take action?
The statute doesn't actually provide for a probationary license. We can perhaps work on formulating a restrictive, a more restrictive license, a more stringent license. We are permitted under case law to be more restrictive than state statute, but there's not actually a probationary license that's provided for. And we can certainly work on putting that together in more detail.
I would like to have us as a council look at a more restrictive license. And based upon the issues that we're encountering in various locations, I think it would be to our, the citizens and the communities' best interest if we had more restrictions, because clearly, when we get reports, legal reports, that give us background information, and the most recent one was in 2010, there is a history here. I mean, it's not just one or two, but there's an ongoing history.
We'll be happy to look at that, councilmen, and see what we can come up with that may...
So maybe we could have discussion at a workshop about how that would work?
Sure.
How should we handle this one, though? I mean, obviously, there's a question for tonight. Can we somehow move forward with this pending a review of that license and some additional...
Or maybe we allow this to automatically stay in place until we get some recommendation back that we could then put this under?
If council is of a mind to determine that there are questions about good moral character, the council is free to decide to deny that license, and then we can proceed and defend that license. I think it may be difficult, given that, as indicated, it would not be insufficient under the current city code or under state statute for misdemeanor violations, even violations that occurred as recently as a couple of years ago. Further, for felonies, for example, after, once the felony is five years old or older, then the applicant has the ability to prove that they've been rehabilitated. So there'd be some kind of hearing process that would be needed. My advice would be that on this particular one, it would be difficult because they're not felonies, and...
Can we continue this hearing, and they can stay operating while we formulate whatever language you have suggested that might be necessary?
A new application.
I'm sorry?
This is for a new application.
So they're not, they currently are not able, don't even have a liquor license?
They don't have a liquor license currently, so the council could simply postpone this item if that's what the council would like to do until the next council meeting. That, I don't have any idea what kind of impact that might have on the business or when they're going to open.
Someone else currently has a license there that is current?
So they would be able to continue to serve alcohol or operate the bar until we made a final decision on their application?
That would be one of the possibilities, as long as there hasn't been a surrendering of that license, yes.
Do we know that?
They have not surrendered it yet.
So I would like to continue this until we have resolution on more stringent policies as, with the understanding that they're still able to operate as a bar because the license has not been surrendered.
Okay.
I don't want to have a, create a problem there until we get this resolved.
I believe that would be a workable solution for the short term.
Okay. So that's my motion.
Anybody in the audience with any thoughts on this one? Seeing none. No motion.
Seven yes.
All right. Takes us to item 24. Item 24 is a termination agreement for leases with United Parcel Service, Inc. at the Des Moines International Airport. We have a request from the audience to speak on this.
Good afternoon. My name's Marty Mock, 2701 Arthur. In looking at the council communication that you got on this item, I'd like to refer you to page two on the last part of the city manager's recommendation. And this is, in consideration of the value of future payments related to pilot program through December 2029, the issue is $5 million that the city would be getting under this program. Given the fact of the hearings that are being taking place, that was just announced by the city manager in regard to the budget, and understanding that we have to make up close to $8 million or $8 million plus in budget, what I'd like to recommend, instead of not having this go anyplace in particular right now, that this $5 million be left on the table in order to be a bargaining position for the city to go to, or the city council to go to, in relationship to what you hear during the hearings. And that, I understand the city manager's reluctance in the aspect of the fact that this is a one-time revenue, but it is a one-time revenue under a pilot program, which is payment in lieu of taxes. So this money would have gone into the general budget anyway had taxes been paid. So what I'd like to have you do is take this $5 million, hold it in abeyance until after you've heard the comments and the ideas from the city, and as you're discussing the process, that this is one possible avenue that we can mitigate some of the problem and some of the pain we're going to feel in the cutbacks. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Mayor? Yes. Mr. Manager?
Mayor and council, I appreciate the suggestion, and I think the essence of it, that is, that we should take it up as part of the budget approval process makes a lot of sense, and that's really the forum at which you should make decisions about money. So that's an appropriate suggestion, I think. But there's a couple of things about this that we all need to keep in mind, in my view. One is that we currently receive from the airport $300,000 or $400,000 dollars a year in operating revenue by virtue of this agreement with the UPS. It's in the form of a payment in lieu of tax. Those funds that we get today are deposited into the city's operating budget and used to fund our ongoing services. So as this agreement goes away, that revenue stream also goes away, and it's incumbent upon the city to figure out ways to use this lump sum, this one-time sum of money, to basically replace that ongoing revenue stream that we've enjoyed for many years now. So it's important, as we think about it, that we set these funds aside, I think that's appropriate, but to make sure that the funds are used in such a way that we can maintain that revenue that we have been getting from the UPS. There are different ways to do it. There are different sorts of endowment, endowments for operating funds that can be established, but the concept, I think, is a sound one. Keep in mind that these are one-time dollars. You're not going to get this again next year, so you really don't want to use that $5 million as a way to plug an operating budget shortfall, because if you do that, then the problem that you create two or three years out hence is really enormous, because you won't have made those reductions in expenses. So not using it as a one-time revenue in the operating budget's really important. Using the funds to create some sort of an operating endowment does make sense, but I would agree with the speaker that making those decisions finally, in the context of your operating budget decisions, makes a lot of sense. You'll have that opportunity over the next couple, three months as we deal with budget issues, but I would urge you to keep in mind those budgetary principles.
Any thoughts, questions, anybody?
I'll move to receive and file the information incorporated into the other information we gathered during the town meetings.
Seven yes.
All right. That completes the consent agenda. That takes us to item 29. Item 29, the first item, which is an ordinance, second consideration, manning Chapter 114 of the municipal code to add streets in five neighborhoods to the list of snow ordinance streets designations. Council communication number 11-601. Anybody in the audience to speak on this item? Or, Mr. Stowe, would you like to speak first, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, county members of the council, Bill Stowe, Public Works. Councilman Greece, really in forwarding the interests of his ward, has asked that I provide a brief overview for your benefits of the process we've gone through involving residential streets in an attempt to limit residential parking during plowing operations. Let me step back for one second and, you know, put this in some kind of context that I hope will be meaningful, not only to the council, but hopefully to the viewing audience also. There is one question that in my career in public works, every winter residents ask with rising and falling levels of decibels, depending on how bad the weather is, and with rising and falling levels of decibels, depending on how bad the weather is, and the question is this, you get it also, why weren't you in my neighborhood quicker with snowplows? If you take that question as operating folks and try to find an answer to it that doesn't break the budget, that doesn't involve adding more people and more equipment, we go to our drivers. And to a person, the answer that we get about what is the biggest constraint to doing your job quicker when it comes to snow plowing is on-street parking. That is, without doubt, the single most important factor and important constraint to try and overcome to improve our plowing operations. With that in mind, a few years ago, we started off on a process to begin to move off of the snow route restraints that are very real on arterial streets in Des Moines. We basically have an ordinance that exists now that says, "Thou shall not park on a designated snow route until we've completed parking, until we've completed plowing on the snow routes." Then we go to the residential areas, and frankly, obviously, that's where we run into problems with on-street parking. The key to quicker, more efficient plowing is in areas that allow it, the use of this kind of apparatus. What you see here is a snow plow with a wing plow. The wing plow is the small plow you see on the passenger side. Essentially, what it allows us to do, and when there is not parking on a street, is to go through that residential area and provide far more efficient, quicker, and better plowing. One issue that you can't see, there's something called a belly plow underneath, just off between the cab and the box of that truck, that's a vertical plow that sits midway in that truck that allows down pressure. Also, an innovation in the last 10 years or so that really has provided us an opportunity to get down to the pavement more quickly, not constrained by on-street parking. But the wing plow, this area, is extremely difficult to operate when there are cars parked on the street. Unfortunately, each and every year, when that is the case, that is, there are cars parked on the street, our plow drivers will find Mr. Lester and his staff negotiating on our behalf for claims associated with damage because of that. A few years ago, as we mentioned, we went to a number of areas, most particularly the Waterbury neighborhood, and talked with the residents there and talked with the neighborhood association about how we could restrict parking. Again, we view the wing plow as providing somewhere in the neighborhood of a third more efficiency when we plow residential streets. In talking with our staff today and trying to quantify numbers associated with this, I have every confidence in talking with you that the current process we have that allows parking on residential streets, unlike our suburbs, during snow events costs the city hundreds of thousands of dollars each and every season from our road maintenance fund because of inefficiencies associated with that and unfortunately, damage claims. This is an example of exactly what I'm talking about. On the right is a neighborhood that has restricted residential parking. You can certainly see that we're down to the pavement, do not have the problem we have on the left, where essentially, we do an initial plowing sweep, have the inability to provide the clearing that we otherwise would have if there are parking restrictions, and then are forced to come back and replow the streets, causing problems to folks whose driveways now are full with ice and snow. Inefficient, ineffective, expensive. The ordinance before you tonight, the ordinance change adds five additional neighborhoods to the existing 16 neighborhoods where we have existing restrictions on residential parking during snow events. The five neighborhoods are included here. I know the Merle Hay neighborhood is the one that I believe is most controversial before you in my discussions with Mr. Grease and others. I have heard from residents in each and every one of these neighborhoods generally in support, but ultimately, obviously, the support and idea of whether it's appropriate or not lies at the council's feet, certainly not at staff's feet nor the neighborhood association. The council's clear request from staff is approval in each of these five neighborhoods to add an additional five neighborhoods.
Can I ask this question, just to clarify?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Of the neighborhoods that you currently have in, not the ones that we're talking about adding?
Right.
Have any of them ever asked you to be removed?
They've not, Mayor. We have 16 neighborhoods now on this map. They are in white. The five that we are before you tonight on the second reading of ordinance are the five salmon-colored ones. None of the 16 have approached us to be removed from those neighborhoods where there are parking restrictions. That's not to say there isn't controversy, Mayor, or we haven't had concerns about, some residents certainly raising concerns about where they park, but the neighborhood associations themselves nor the leadership in those neighborhoods have not approached us asking for repeal. In fact, what we typically hear is about the opposite. There are other neighborhoods that have an interest in this, that frankly, we don't have the wing plows to be able to push this out quickly enough.
May I ask you a question?
Let's let him finish.
One of the questions that's often asked is, where do we park? If we can't park on the street until you plowed it, where do we park? And clearly, for 90% of us or for some large percentage of us, parking in your driveway is the glib answer that's easy to give, but there are other alternatives out there. The snow routes after they've been plowed, that is, the ordinance then, the snow ordinance that deals with routes, then goes in abeyance, we go to the residential neighborhoods, and one could plow, or one could park there. Neighbors' driveways with permission, and certainly with permission, other areas like businesses, schools, churches, and parks. But I have to emphasize that certainly, parking in your own driveway is the preferred solution until we've had an opportunity to plow, then move to the street, if that's your preference. Notice is an issue, clearly, and I know Wendy will be talking about notice and concerns that people don't know how this works. We have listservs available for folks in any of these neighborhoods or anyone who wants to know when the residential restrictions are in play. We have web information that's out there, and we'll have topical postings like the snow ordinance being in effect, as well as this ordinance being in effect, when it comes up and when it expires. So certainly, we understand that people want to know what the restrictions are. I must say, as somebody who's lived in the snow belt in large cities and in comparably sized cities to this, the idea of restricting folks in residential neighborhoods from parking on the streets is the rule. We are the exception. I have not included the map here for your consideration, but if we were to look at every one of our suburbs, any of our major suburbs, I shouldn't say Cummin or Polk City, but any of our major contiguous suburbs have restrictions on residential parkings until plowing has ended. So we are behind the curve, certainly not in front of the curve. And again, my view is that this increased efficiency will save the road maintenance fund and provide significant improvement in service. The readings, as they've come down, the first reading was passed, as you all know, two weeks ago. Tonight, certainly, we're requesting a second reading. We understand there's still some controversy and some additional opportunity for folks to voice their concern. The third reading would be then, two weeks from tonight, and then we begin the process of beginning to post signs to provide notice in the neighborhoods of the ordinance restrictions. Be happy to answer any questions you have, otherwise, I'm confident Wendy has a few for me.
Bill, just one quick question before Wendy comes up. You mentioned the 33% reduction in time. Do you have a figure on last year's dollar totals amounts along those lines?
We do, Hallie. We have actual performance numbers from the individual neighborhoods, the 16 that have already been part of that process. The statistics are a little bit more difficult to compare, apple to oranges. When I use the term 33%, and I'll put it up here since, I apologize, since I'm bouncing now between PowerPoint and hard copies, can you give me a camera, Diane? Thanks. It's really based on the premise that this wing plow is essentially half a lane, Hallie. So what's happening here is it's providing an opportunity for us in two passes to do what normally would take three passes. So there's certainly some savings associated with that, just because of the geometry of the plow. Our actual numbers from last year vary. There is improvement in each and every neighborhood, but the minimum improvement would probably be in the 10% or 15%, as I recall. We have other neighborhoods that we believe that the performance improvement was greater than 33%.
I'd actually like to answer that question for you, being a person of experience using the wing plow.
Could you step up and give your...
My name is Thomas Hayes. I am actually Secretary Treasurer of CPAC. I worked for the city of Des Moines for 16 years, plowed many residential streets and routes. That wing plow, actually, most streets, residential streets, takes about four passes. That will knock it down to three if you can get in there with a wing plow and there's no cars in the streets. But there's the other factor that has to be figured in there, and Bill didn't really talk about it too much. But when you take the cars off the streets, there's a lot of time that's used to go back to those streets, when those cars get moved, to move that snow. We spend many days and nights moving that snow back up to the curb that didn't get moved in the first place because the cars were parked there. So not only do you have the safety factor for the employees or the pedestrians and the time that it takes, you're saving an awful lot right there.
All right. Any other comments by anybody in the audience? Come on up.
First of all, Bill, a couple of questions for you.
Well, would you come to the microphone, give us your name, address, and everything, please?
I have a voice that resonates, but I understand your microphone.
That's all right. We have a...
You all know me, Wendy LaCina, 4155 53rd Street. Question one for you, Bill.
Well, you have to direct them to us, and then we'll...
I apologize.
Go ahead.
City Council, I'd like for you to ask this question. Bill, Haley asked about the numbers. I think your answer was somewhat, I think his answer was somewhat vague. I'd like to see more specific. I will reiterate that I will be on board if he can give me the more specifics. Tell us which neighborhoods were 15%, which are 40, so that a true market assessment can be done. Because in my neighborhood, houses are, the lots are smaller, the houses are closer together. Therefore, you have more taxable structures in a smaller amount of space versus some neighborhoods, John Doe's neighborhood, where he's got a house that's on a lot that's one and a half times the size of mine. Clearly, that would be less cars to park. My argument on that is basically that, Bill, I'm with you, I want to get the cars off the, Bill, I'm, council, I'm with Bill. I'd like to see the cars off the street, but under this current plan, I don't know that it's realistic. And per the gentleman there's comment, I have watched more since December last year when I got the ticket and asked the city police department to revoke them or rescind them. Our street was done in three passes now, and it wasn't the plow. So that would be one question I'd like asked. Do you want to ask him and then have him answer, or do you want all the questions for Bill first?
Why don't you give them all, and then he'll take...
Okay. The other one, I would like to have a cost comparison of the wingtip plow cost versus the other plows. Because in a neighborhood such as mine, when it may not be realistic to get all the cars off the street, would it be more efficient to stick with having a fleet of 30% of the wing plows and 70% of the other plows, because some streets, it's just not realistic? I'd like to see that cost comparison, and if Bill would let me work with him, I'd donate time to it. The last question I have for Bill, it would be, you answered Mayor County's question about if any neighborhoods have been removed or asked to be removed after they asked to be admitted. I would like to know if any neighborhoods have been added without being, without asking to be added. Has market research been done to say, okay, as a city, we need to make the decision without soliciting advocacy groups such as the neighborhood association to ask for admittance? Those are my questions, and then I do have a few statements I wouldn't mind making.
Why don't you read us your statements, too?
Okay. A yes vote on this issue would set a precedent that recognizes neighborhood associations are their own legal entity for governing and/or districting and/or ordinances. A yes vote would set a precedent that recognizes association boards currently, more advocacy groups, are the sole contributors to the admission to the program, as no other market research has been presented to the council to justify selective admission. Association boards give permission, council admits. I do have some emails from Pat, you know, a copy of the email that some of the association presidents have sent to Public Works, and the word permission and admission was used.
Would you like to make those part of the record?
Yes, I would.
Would you give them to Mr. Coleman, and then we'll quickly receive and file them?
And then the last one is, a vote yes would also set a precedent that approves using taxpayer resources to give exclusive and premium service to selective neighborhoods at no upcharge, while other equal taxpaying neighborhoods do not get the same service. That's it.
Okay. Would you give us your information, and we'll receive and file it?
May I make a copy of it first? May I make a copy?
All right. Why don't we just...
This side would be all that you would need to copy.
All right. Let's have a motion received and filed.
The questions. Can we answer the questions?
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Thank you.
I was just to receive your...
To receive your call. Thank you.
And then I think Bill will answer a question.
All right. Mr. Stowe?
Mr. Mayor, I'll try to remember all, I believe there were three questions. One of them was the cost of the wing plow. The second was whether we had considered or compelled any neighbors, neighborhoods to join, and the third is the elusive statistical issue about how efficient is it? Let me try to do them in that order. First of all, the cost of the wing plow itself, that is, this addition onto the vehicle is about $10,000. I think you could say, in our view, that that pays for itself in terms of the efficiency of this operation, as we understand it, within one season. And the life expectancy of that kind of addition is eight to 10 years. So we believe that this is a net business payback, to say the very least.
It's not a whole new truck, it's just an addition?
That's correct. Yeah, that, it's this addition itself. It's not, it's certainly not the whole new truck, nor the whole new plow apparatus. Second, on the issue of the numbers themselves, this is a very difficult issue to track because we're, we have 100 pieces of equipment, only 21 or 22 of which are equipped like this, out. There are plow times as they complete, and then comparing that to some kind of metric is an extremely difficult process. If we had global positioning systems or something on individual trucks, that may be more precise. We do not have that, that's another budget issue, but we're essentially relying on the driver calling back with a completion time, and then putting that together as an aggregate for the neighborhood with several other plow report times. So it's extremely difficult for me to give you, or Wendy, or myself, any real sense of precision here. I guess, you know, the metaphor is, if you're scooping your sidewalk, do you use a big shovel or a little shovel if you want speed? I think it's pretty clear that you use a big shovel and probably don't want somebody standing in the middle of the sidewalk as you're trying to shovel it. That would be the comparison that I would use here. And the third question, have we compelled any neighborhoods into this, that is, the 16 that are currently into it, or the 21 that we're proposing, based on the legislation in front of you tonight, have all been done based upon the neighborhood's request through the neighborhood groups? I must tell you that we've had some reservation about whether we should simply come to you with an ordinance citywide. Our view was to try and grow this in a way that we have equipment to support wing plows in each of the neighborhoods as they come on. If we were to add 50-plus neighbors, neighborhoods, that is, we do not have 50 wing plows, so there is some trade-off in doing that. And we do realize that there are neighborhoods where this would be a challenge because of the size of this equipment. Drake is an example, Sherman Hill. Those are neighborhoods that their geometry, their density, a number of different, rental housing is an example, can create significant issues in this type of program. There are other options out there that we are considering, the city of Chicago, the city of Milwaukee, any large city in the Midwest that I'm familiar with has restricted parking in dense areas, as an example. You park Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Sunday on the east side, the other days of the week on the west side, and force people to move their vehicles. Those are options that we're looking at. End of the day, how can we be more efficient? We're more efficient by asking people to stay off the street with residential parking until we've had an opportunity to plow it. It's nothing more complex than that. I realize that it is inconvenience for folks, but I have to tell you, as you all know, the obvious, it is also inconvenient when we don't get to neighborhoods for two or three days, because we have to go through this laborious process of putting a very small piece of equipment on a street that has folks parked on both sides.
Bill, just a couple quick, kind of summary questions. From your standpoint, this is a more efficient program, it gets the streets cleared faster...
Absolutely.
...at a cheaper cost.
Absolutely.
And the neighborhoods who have joined in the past, the 16 neighborhoods, have been supportive, and these five ask to be added?
Absolutely, to each and every one of the questions, absolutely, yes, to each and every one of the questions.
Can neighborhood association boards ask to be added?
To be precise, to be precise, our communications are with the neighborhood association boards, they're not with every resident in each of these neighborhoods. And ultimately, there's been a lot of heat put on Merle Hay Neighborhood Association, as an example, for recommending through us to you, support of this. Want to tell you that ultimately, I understand it's your decision as council folks, I fully appreciate that. It was not our intention to put the neighborhood association or their boards in a difficult position. We simply wanted to educate them, make sure that they, as a group, were largely supportive, and they have been. But as you know, there are a number of folks in those neighborhoods that are in opposition... But as you know, there are a number of folks in those neighborhoods that are in opposition. I would like to mention, if I may, something that I didn't make clear in my presentation, but Wendy mentioned enforcement. Because of Chief Bradshaw's great work and their cooperation, this season again, we'll be providing each and every license plate or each and every vehicle one warning before they're actually ticketed in violation of this. So if I, who live on the south side, park in the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association illegally under this ordinance, Chief Bradshaw will give me a warning the first time around, which should give me notice that that is not something that I can do in the future. If I park the second time this season in that or any other neighborhood without license plate, then I will be fined. So the idea is to try and educate people before we begin really fining them, and I appreciate Chief Bradshaw and her staff's help on that.
And that was a modification we made as a result of something that didn't work in the program?
Absolutely. And there's always concern, and I know Mr. Moore has talked to me personally on this, trying to get as best notice out there as possible to folks. Clearly, these kind of debates provide a lot of education to folks, but probably the best education is the one that Chief and her staff have come up with, and that's providing a notice of violation, a warning, the first time, and then the second time fining.
Thank you for that addition.
Okay. Is there anybody else to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Joanne Hanover. I live at 1406 Merle Hay Road. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm usually here, as you know, to represent the revitalization program for Merle Hay, but tonight, I'm here to talk for myself. I live on an arterial street. We're not allowed to park there, period. Not just snow time, all the time. When I mentioned this to Ms. LaCina, she quickly replied, "You knew that when you moved there." And we did know that. But that's been so many years ago, and I don't want to tell you how many. There wasn't near the traffic that there is now. And I honestly have to tell you, I'm thankful to live on a major street. I can always get out onto Merle Hay Road. I can get to Hickman. I can get to University. When I was working at the Capitol for 17 years, I could get out of my driveway, I could go University or freeway and get there in 12 to 15 minutes. There are advantages to this. I know some people don't get it and they don't understand. They might like it if they tried it. I'm not saying it's perfect. I just think it's the best thing that they've been able to come up with. And I think some people might be surprised at how much easier it is to get around. I have seen all of the streets surrounding my house in the wintertime, and they're really a mess. Usually three ruts. One down the middle and one on each side where people have driven all winter long to get around the cars that were parked and snowed in. And then it melts and it turns to ice. And I'm not exaggerating. I have been down those side streets and wished I had not gotten on them. At any rate, I hope you'll approve this. This is my personal feeling that people that don't like it will have an adjustment to make. And I do understand that. It was an adjustment for me. Kids couldn't play in the front yard. They could climb the tree in the front yard, but they couldn't play ball out there. And you just have to make concessions and do the best you can. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joanne. Anyone else? Let's go ahead and close the hearing for the reading this ordinance. Hallie, thank you for having Mr. Stowe give us that presentation. It is a neighborhood in your ward that at least has a question on this. How would you like to move forward?
I wanted Bill to speak. Thanks, Bill, for speaking. I think that's helpful also, just for public information for the neighborhoods that have joined. So I thought that was, that was good regardless. I haven't heard any complaints from the other four neighborhoods, so I don't think those are an issue. As far as Merle Hay, Wendy, to be honest with you, since you raised it as a controversial issue at the last council meeting, I've actually received one email agreeing with you and a number that are, that are very supportive of this. I've received several phone calls from the neighborhoods who joined it last year and wanted to reiterate how much they appreciate the program, and a number of phone calls, emails of people who want this to happen in Merle Hay. So I just don't see from the neighborhood or reaction that's opposed to moving this forward. And I think in the budget situation that we're in, efficiency and lower cost providing the same service is certainly an asset moving forward. So I'm going to go ahead and move the second reading on all the neighborhoods listed. And I guess if there's more opposition that comes forward, we might have this discussion again in a couple weeks, but I haven't, haven't seen that thus far. So I'm going to go ahead and move item 29.
All right. Item 29's been moved.
Seven yes.
All right. It is 5:20. We need to go to the hearings immediately. Let's go to item 36. First hearing item at 5:20. Item 36, on the request from Arnold DeWitt to rezone property in the vicinity of 1241 East 38th Street from R-160, one-family low-density residential to limited C2 general retail and highway-oriented commercial, and to continue that hearing to November 7 at 5:00 p.m. Anybody here totally disappointed on this and was hoping to listen to it tonight? We have a motion, please?
If not, I would move item 36.
All right. The outcome of which is, again, for everybody, November 7, 5:00 p.m. Item 37, on the request from Hugh Nungan to rezone 1435 University Avenue from R-3, multi-family residential to limited C1 neighborhood retail commercial to allow retail development, and to continue that hearing also to November 7, 2011, at 5:00 p.m. Anyone here that would like to have a word or two on this one?
Terry Wells, 1157 14th Place, Des Moines, Iowa. I'm hoping that I'll be able to be back on the 7th, but I think I may have a conflict. So that's why I'd like to at least make a few statements tonight that can go into the record. First of all, I did watch the planning and zoning about this, and I was a little put off because neither of the Neighborhood Associations really seemed to be involved and have any comment either way, which would be King Irving and Chedon Park. This is on the borderline of those areas. So there are three quick things I want to point out. One, since the winds have taken over that property, it was, it was an eyesore. It was a really bad piece of property. It had barbecue grills and cement blocks and old picnic benches and trash, and they've done a really good job in the last year, year and a half, in cleaning, cleaning this place up. And they do live right around the corner on 14th Place in Chedon Park. So they're, they're about the same distance I am, five or six houses from it, even though it's not in Chedon Park, it's in King Irving. Secondly, the King Irving plan that has been approved by King Irving, and I believe by the council and by the county and everything, from about 11th Street to 15th Street on University on that north side, is approved in their plan to become retail and business space. I mean, that's part of the King Irving plan. So I'm not sure why we're still trying to keep this a, a multiple-family resident area if we're, if we're really looking to try to make this a commercial zone for about those four blocks through there. The last thing that I want to point out is, at the corner of 13th and University, there's a lot about the same size, and on that lot, we have two businesses. We have Marianas Tacos, it's a restaurant, and we have a barber shop. And if you ever get the chance in the next month or so, because it sounds like this is going to be continued, go look at the size of the lot at 13th and University, where those two businesses are, and go to 15th and look and see, the sizes are about the same, and these folks are asking for, to put one, one business on that lot. So with, having said all that, the other consideration that I noticed as I saw them suggesting the planning and zoning was, it looked like their plans was to put the business far to the north and facing University. And I would like to suggest, and I don't know if this would go back to planning and zoning, or if it's something that the council could suggest, or that we could work out in the next month, but instead of facing University, maybe have it face 15th. Because one of the concerns raised in the planning and zoning was about traffic in and out off of University. So if it sat to the north, you would have a lot of traffic coming off of University. But if they could sit their building facing west, their, their traffic could come off of 15th Street, which would, might help with the safety. So those are just some of my concerns. Again, I would like to see Chedon Park and King Irving Neighborhood Associations be included in some of these talks, and I do believe that King Irving's already approved a plan for commercial revitalization of those four blocks. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. I will go ahead and move to receive and file Terry's comments and then continue the hearing.
And forward on to the manager and the planning director?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Terry, for coming down.
Six yes.
Item 38, on a request from McDonald's Corporation to rezone 3002 Forest Avenue from limited C1 neighborhood retail commercial to revise limited C1 neighborhood retail commercial to allow the revision of conditions, defining the site circulation and parking configuration and exterior design of the building, subject to conditions, A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item?
I'm Eldon McAfee. I live at 3000 School Street, and I'm a member of the Drake Neighborhood Association. I'm here tonight speaking both, I guess, on behalf of myself, but on behalf of the Drake Neighborhood Association. I guess I'll start out with how I presented this to planning and zoning here a few weeks ago, and this is what happens when you stick around long enough on these neighborhood boards. This stuff seems to come back. I was on the, and was actually president of the Drake Neighborhood Association in 1999 when McDonald's first proposed to move their location from about a half a block, I believe, west to the current location at the corner of 30th and Forest. I see several faces on this council who were involved in that also, and maybe not on the council at that time. Without belaboring the point, at that time, a, an agreement was reached between the Neighborhood Association and McDonald's as to how that structure would be built, and there were quite a few conditions that were placed on it, approved by the council. And mainly, it was the design of the structure, and that was, it was not the standard design for McDonald's at the time. It was a, I think, we felt a very unique design, and we were very pleased with that design, and we think it has been well-served for the last 12 years. We're here again tonight, and I want to start by saying, we as a Neighborhood Association are not opposed to what I think really brings this in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission and now the council, and that is, the need for an extra drive-through lane and a relatively small expansion to the building. We think that's great. We're here to support that. We are very pleased that McDonald's is in our neighborhood. They do an excellent job with the site. It is kept very clean, and I think is an addition to our neighborhood, and we are glad that they have enough business that they need an extra drive-through. And as one who has parked there by the building as the drive-through traffic backs up around the corner of the building and you have a hard time getting out of there, I am personally very supportive of the extra drive-through. Our concern is with the proposal to redesign the front of the building, and this is where we get back to what was agreed to in 1999. McDonald's is proposing, and P&amp;Z approved it, to redesign the building. My understanding is, the only need and the reason for the redesign is we're here because of the proposed drive-through, extra drive-through lane and the expansion. And my, my understanding, and our Neighborhood Association's understanding, is that the redesign of the front of the building has nothing to do with the expansion. It is here because, well, we're doing the expansion, so let's, let's redesign the building. If I'm wrong in that, I'm sure I will be corrected. We believe that the negotiated agreement in 1999 should remain. There is no reason to change it. If the reason is for uniformity of McDonald's design, that same proposal and argument was made in 1999. It was not a uniform design then, it's not a uniform design now. We think it's unique. We believe it shows that neighborhoods and businesses can work their differences out and come up with a design that adds to the character of the neighborhood, and that, again, has been a great addition to our neighborhood over the last 12 years, and we hate to see it changed right now. That's why we are opposed to the design change. Any questions for me?
This is actually the position of the Drake Neighborhood Association. They're all in agreement with this as well, Eldon?
Yes, and I do have, and I'd be glad to hand this out, or I can place it on the overhead.
Just put it on the overhead.
Right, like that?
Yeah.
Okay. If you'd like, I can hand a copy out. I brought enough for everyone, but I'll move that down just a little. At our September meeting, and this is a synthesized document, I'll call it, those are, the board members that were present, and under old business, because we had, had been on our agenda several times, after the Planning and Zoning Commission had met and approved McDonald's request with the changes that you have in front of you, again, I moved that we should support the city staff recommendation over the P&amp;Z recommendation by sending a letter and directing a board member to attend the meeting on the 26th. That was seconded and it passed unanimously. It was continued from the 26th until tonight, of course. I am that board member that's been directed to be here, and unfortunately, I don't believe you received a letter, but this is the action that was passed by the board. And when I, again, I don't want to gloss over things, but I don't want to go into, I know you have a long meeting. The staff recommendation in front of P&amp;Z was to continue with the current design as far as the building itself, the negotiated agreement, but supported, and we are, again, in full support of the extra drive-through lane and the building expansion.
Thank you.
I'd move to receive and file that if needed.
Should I hand that to you? Anything else?
Ball, favor say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Thanks, Eldon.
It's received.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Coleman?
Not ready to give an opinion or anything yet, but I, I didn't see the P&amp;Z minutes and discussion in our packet, the online. Am I missing that? Or, and if that's right, could we get somebody, one of the staff members from P&amp;Z to give us a short update on the staff recommendation and how it got changed there? Did you see it in the...
Mayor, County, Members of the Council, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator for the city of Des Moines. Quickly go to the overhead.
Quickly go to the overhead. This site sketch that McDonald's submitted actually shows the modifications that they're proposing to the existing site. It's going to add a second drive-through lane on the south side of the existing building. That would require them to eliminate this row of parking, as well as some parking on the southwest corner of the building. That would allow for small building expansion on the southwest corner of the building for cooler space for that. This is a sight shot of the existing, would be the north facade of the McDonald's building, the blue awnings on the front, individual bay windows on the front. That carries around to the side of the building also. What McDonald's would like to do, as part of their revised architecture on the front of the building, would be to reconfigure their window design, eliminate the glue awnings, put in a, two banks of windows, and then reface the north side of the building with this lighter colored block, and then add this, what we call an eyebrow feature over there, McDonald's logo. That is somewhat their new corporate prototype design. Those changes also come around to the west side of the building, over the entrance of the building, and then just some accent treatments on the other facades would be changed. This was indicated, the staff had recommended approval of the second drive-through, as well as the addition on to the southwest corner of the building, just subject to them matching the brick in the existing building and keeping the facade as it was. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this architectural elevation, so. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Can I, I guess I do have a question. Usually when we do a project like this, it requires the consent of the applicant. Do we have authority to approve only portions of what's before us, or it's an up or down on the whole thing?
I believe the applicant-
I'm going to the point that I think the Neighborhood Association, through Eldon, made, which is, there's many elements that we agree with, that are, I guess if I was McDonald's, the core of it, you know, more customers, more flow through the property.
We did advise McDonald's last week that there was a potential, or there were some concerns expressed about the proposed changes, and I don't know if they have their representatives here tonight to speak, but ultimately, if the council would want to, we sent out a letter of zoning condition acceptance to McDonald's that was based on the Plan and Zoning Commission's recommendation. So if the council wanted to vary from that, I think the best alternative would be to continue for two weeks, so that a new letter could be sent out to McDonald's for their consideration. But McDonald's can speak to their interest in that.
Thank you.
Mike, I have a question while you're up there. Number four on this states, "There shall not include less than five overstorey street trees." Who made that determination?
The Plan and Zoning Commission had added that condition on there.
Your photograph of the north side of the building suggests that there's power lines over the parking. I would like to add to that, unless the municipal arborist gives an exemption on that. I, there's other things to consider, too. You can't just say there's enough space. There are a lot of things you have to look at, and I think we should have the municipal arborist take a look at that.
Understood.
Thank you.
I think the power lines are on the opposite side of the street, also.
Mike, I've got a question also. If you hold that up there, just as you have it. I don't know how the rest of the council, or Eldon, feels about it, but it seems like they've had a bit of a logo change here as well, with that eyebrow feature and sort of a little insignia there. And my feeling about this tying into the fabric of the overall neighborhood is that I don't feel like the new sign, for instance, might be detracting. I like the idea of having the blue and the more brick, and without that light color, I guess, at least at this moment, I wonder, Eldon, do you feel the same way about that? I mean, isn't, yeah, would you come up?
It was my understanding they want to leave everything just as is on the front of the building.
Right. Staff did?
Is that correct, Mike?
Our recommendation was to leave everything else the same, just put the addition on the southwest corner of the building and a red brick that matches the rest of the building.
Just as I look at it, I just don't see a big problem with the sign. I think that the issue for me, and if I was a neighbor, would be the awnings and the solid color and the brick, it ties more into the character of what we were hoping was going to go on in this neighborhood. Does that recall having been one of the, what Mr. Mahaffey and I said on P&amp;Z before we referred it over to a couple of our council members that are still here?
Mr. Mayor, the major issues for the Neighborhood Association back then, and are currently, are the maintenance of the brick, the awnings received a lot of discussion at P&amp;Z, and we do like the current design. When it comes to the, I think, you know, the yellow swoosh, if you will, above, not to use a different corporate term there, but get myself in trouble, but we are not, we would prefer to stick with the current design as it is now. Again, I think we, if I may, and if I'm going beyond what you asked me, please tell me, but we've had some discussions with McDonald's. Just as in 1999, we had a lot of discussions, we're open to more.
All right.
Thank you.
Just a question. Thank you, Mike, for answering that.
David Bent, Bishop Engineering, 3501 104th Street in Urbandale. As you can see, the, I believe this is the Hubble project right behind us, has a lot of stucco and kind of the grayish, brownish colors. And originally, we came to the neighborhood meeting with stucco in place of the block, and it was talked about, can we get that into a block form instead of stucco? We have switched that out to a brick or block. And originally, I thought P&amp;Z's recommendation, or city staff's recommendation to P&amp;Z was, since it was a stone material, they were okay with that. We also have some other pictures of our competitors. This is Paul Revere's next door, which isn't of brick nature or of the blue awnings. They're not the greatest pictures. They're subway, just down the street, and Jethrose, which isn't all that old. And those are the people we've got to compete with for restaurants. And we were just, what we felt was a nice look, going to brick, going to blocks. Blue awnings is not really in McDonald's color scheme at this time.
It's Drake's, though.
What's that?
It's Drake's.
Yeah.
Our discussion-
Yeah, with P&amp;Z, it kept being talked about how many other businesses in the neighborhood have blue awnings or required to have blue. And I don't think they could prove that too many of them are required to have blue. Even some of the Drake buildings didn't have blue awnings.
We just haven't sat in on some of that discussion years ago. I think that the idea was Drake was, you know, hoping and looking for everybody to be part of the culture, part of the neighborhood, part of the fabric moving forward, and was sort of a look back. McDonald's had a different property down the street, as I recall, and was looking to be here, and was looking for some support. So I think that the neighborhood, Drake, and P&amp;Z, and the city council, all, you know, came together on that, with sort of some understanding. I understand that some of these folks didn't have to come before P&amp;Z for zoning to make those things happen. Would they like to make some significant changes that would require that? I would guess that they probably would be looking at a similar discussion. I guess that's all I-
I would just add, because I was very involved in the discussions as well, and there was an awful lot of effort that went into coming up with the current design that we have. So I can respect and appreciate the Neighborhood Association and why they want to retain that. I think their support for the expansion and growth of the business, which I think is wonderful, but I think the other person that we haven't mentioned tonight that participated in the discussions was President Maxwell, because we had another project that was going on, and he was new to town and was working very hard to make sure that we got this all in place. So, there's just a lot of ownership with the design that has come up, and I know that there's some change with McDonald's, but I would be, really like to see us retain that, because that's something that we worked hard to gain as we moved forward in this project back 10, 11 years ago.
And we're glad to hear that it's so successful that you need a little expansion.
That's great.
Yeah, I, like Frank, was on Plan and Zoning in that period of time, and I know we went through a lot of different issues at that point, and we settled on this design, and I still think it's much more appealing for the neighborhood, for the, continue this design than to change it. And I'd be all for, and we're certainly happy that you have to expand to address the need of more space and more drive-through, and, but I certainly like the design that we now have.
So is the message, we're open for discussion, or what should we?
I agree with the comments that have been made so far here. I would, I would hope that McDonald's would invite us to send a letter that Mike referenced that had the different conditions on the approval that they have to sign off for and bring it back in two weeks. I don't know what authority you have to accept that and move forward, but that's where I would be.
Looks like we have somebody else there.
Richard, I'm with McDonald's, 7401 Kentville in Skokie, Illinois. We would be happy to listen to any recommendations that you could put down in writing. I will bring that back to the corporate board of design, and they will try to address as many of that as possible. Yeah, we definitely enjoy being a good neighbor. We've had a lot of success in that neighborhood, and we would like to continue that, and so open to any sort of suggestions. I would ask that it will all be in writing, because that way, that's the only way I can convey that to the, to my designers back home.
And I think we will do that, and I think the sense that you get from the councils, we're supportive of the second drive-through, we're supportive of the addition. It's just the facade that we have a problem with. And to your point, I think the new facade that you are looking at, I mean, it looks great, but it doesn't match up with that plan that was decided on in 99, unlike the other council members here, mostly. I wasn't in the planning process, as Councilmember Meyer astutely noted at the last meeting. I was in the ninth grade at the time. So I wasn't there, but I think that forces me, or encourages me, to lend some deference to the people who were there, and a lot did go into that, and that's one of the reasons the McDonald's exists where it does, is because of that plan. And so I'm not sure we want to go backwards on that plan, so I don't know the proper legal steps, but I think we have to continue the hearing in order to get all of that in writing.
Well, I think we ought to-
Prior to the next council meeting.
Should we send them the letter, if everybody likes that references the staff recommendation, which seems to be supported by the neighborhood, and let you take that to your corporate board, and we'll continue the hearing?
And that would be my motion.
Okay.
Absolutely. We'd like to agree to that.
And your motion did include continuing the hearing, is that correct?
Correct.
Seven yes.
All right, and thank you all for coming. I appreciate it very much. Item 39, "On items regarding the Des Moines Airport Authority. A is a hearing on the proposed, proposal to enter into real estate lease and asset transfer agreement, Council Communication Number 11-638. One is the first consideration of the ordinance regarding the lease and conveyance of aviation facilities to the authority. And two is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the aviation director and requires six votes. B is an agreement between the City of Des Moines and the Des Moines Airport Authority for the provision of city services. C is the assignment and assumption agreement regarding grant agreements. And D is the Des Moines Aviation Department reduction in staff." With the reading of those, I will open it and see if anybody has any comments. Is there anybody in the audience to comment on this Airport Authority set of agreements and conveyances and other information? All right.
Seeing none, I'll move item 39, A through D.
Six yes, one no.
Okay, item 40. "On the council-initiated request to vacate Broad Street between Indianola Avenue and Southeast 8th Street and rezone the properties surrounding Southern Meadows Apartments from Limited R3 Multiple Family Residential and R160 Low Density Single Family Residential to PUD Planned Unit Development, and to continue that hearing to October 24th, 2011 at 5:00 PM." Anybody here speak about this? Seeing none, could we have a motion? As to continue?
It's a, it's, I just, Frank, if I could say something briefly?
Please.
It's a great project. I look forward to it coming to fruition, and the sooner the better, but I will move item 40 to continue to October 24th.
Item 41, "The Amendment of the Zoning Ordinance Text, Chapter 134 in Site Plan Ordinance Text in Chapter 82 Establishing a Downtown Overlay District, Which Provides Site Plan Guidelines for an Area Generally Bound by Interstate 235 on the north, the Raccoon and Des Moines Rivers on the south, and East 14th on the east, and ML King Jr. Parkway on the west. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above." Anyone here to speak on that item? Please come forward. Ask if anybody else wants to speak on any of these items. We'd ask that you kind of get in line, and so we get a sense on how many are here to speak. We have one speaker. Give us your name and address, sir.
Joshua House, Come and Go Convenience Stores, 6400 West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa. Just want to make a brief statement. I just want to thank council and the mayor for having the opportunity for me to speak. As you may recall, last April, Come and Go's president, CEO, Kyle Kraus, came and made a few statements regarding the moratorium that was enacted, regarding the C3 and C3A districts prohibiting the sale of fuels. I think, at that time as well as today, we believe that the residents of the city of Des Moines deserve the type of conveniences that Come and Go would bring to the downtown area. And while we understand that now the overlay district does not expressly prohibit the sales of fuels in convenience stores, the cost of doing some of the certain design requirements, you know, make it cost prohibitive. As a company based here in Des Moines, we look forward to working with the city of Des Moines, and hopefully come into a cohesive development plan for us to operate within the city of Des Moines. And I think more than anything, it's just a statement, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions at this time.
Anybody have any questions? Counselor? All right, thank you.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions for staff, though, just on this item here. As I read through the materials, could you give me, if we could take a project right now, for example, the Des Moines building that's just been acquired? How would this impact it? Because I've had lots of people contact me, and there's some concern that it's too restrictive, and that we've maybe gone too far.
As far as the Des Moines building, I would guess that the impacts of these design guidelines would be very minimal. Really, the only thing out of the new design guidelines that may apply might be a new trash enclosure, if they're going to have one on the exterior of the building. Obviously, the building height is fine under the design guidelines.
It does require that all buildings have outdoor space. What's the definition of outdoor space? Is it just the sidewalk has to be extra wide, or there needs to be a-
There could be a sitting area, there could be a public gathering space. And when you say required, the design guidelines are set up so that they're part of the site plan standards in the city code. And so each of those design guidelines is looked at individually and then collectively. So, as a collective analysis, a site plan could have, could meet- So as a collective analysis, a, a site plan could have, could meet 10 out of 11, or 10 out of 20 of those design guidelines.
So it doesn't have to meet every single one?
Correct. There's, there's a holistic approach to looking at those, or a collective approach.
Just one more question. Assuming the building down on Grand Avenue, which is Rich Eichner's building right across from the Sculpure Park, if he were, had not begun and this were in effect, what, what would he be able to do and not do in that building? That's probably a better example.
Yeah, that building actually covers most of the site, the footprint of the site. Clearly, we would have to take a look at what their intent was for use of the building. If they were clearing that building and, say, adjoining properties, we would look obviously for a multi-story building, clearly along Grand Avenue. But if they were just looking at using the interior of the existing building, you know, the guidelines would have to be applied, and some leniency, I guess, granted on the, on the height and things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
I'll go ahead and move item 41, 41A. Seven, yes.
Item 42, on the Public Works Supply Yard Storage Building, the resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate designating the lowest responsible bidder as Jensen Builders Limited, Dale Jensen, President, $596,600, Council Communication number 11-646. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, we have a, any thoughts by the members of the council?
I'll move 42, 42A.
All right. Let's go back, that completes the hearings. Go back to item 30. Item 30, I believe, let me get back there. Is ordinance first consideration, amending Chapter 114 in municipal code, submitting traffic regulation changes as follows. A is the installation of additional handicap parking space outside of University Avenue, west of Pope Boulevard. And B is the designation of free 15-minute meter and code modifications, Grand Avenue, between 14th and 15th Street, Council Communication number 11-647. Is there anyone here to speak on that item?
I'll move 30A and B on, under the non-prepublished, waiving the second and third readings.
31, amending Chapter 2, Section 2-4 of the municipal code to repeal and replace description of precincts 7A in Section 1.7A of Appendix B, Election Precincts and Wards. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above the waivers requested by the legal department and requires six votes. Anybody here that has any questions on that one? Seeing none? Anybody?
I've got a question for legal staff while we're on this. My understanding then is that since the original county supervisor's map was rejected, their new map basically has to follow our precincts.
That is my understanding as well, of the state, having approved the city's boundaries and ward boundaries, has set that, and so the county will have to follow that and they redo their map.
Thank you.
I'll move 31, 31A. Seven, yes.
All right. Item 32, is a follow-up discussion from September 26th council meeting regarding compensation for the mayor and council members. Any thoughts on that?
Mayor, thank you. It was two weeks ago that we had this discussion. I suggested that people ought to communicate with me if, if they had thoughts on it, just to see if there was any consensus. I've had a chance to talk to most of the council. I think what's most appropriate, and I sent you all an email earlier today, it was Bob Mahaffey's suggestion that we ought to be as transparent and through our normal protocols as possible, which would, which would mean the city personnel committee come back with a recommendation. I'm comfortable and I support doing that. I, I will tell you that we're, we're up against a calendar issue, and I feel that there's only rare circumstances where we probably should consider special meetings or waiving of, of readings of an ordinance. And I will tell you, if we were going to do something, it would be necessary to do that in the month of October because the state law imposes a August, October 31st deadline essentially for us. And, you know, so for the record, the fact that we've talked about it now at two meetings, I'm, I'm, you know, to some degree comfortable with pursuing this over the next couple of weeks and reporting back on the 24th. So I'm, Bob may want to make the motion. It was his idea.
Go ahead.
But that's, that's the discussion.
Well, I have a speaker. Yes, sir.
Marty Mock, 2701, Arthur. I'd like to have these turned into the record, please, for the record.
Thank you.
When I heard at the city council, last city council meeting, the council's members were looking to the possibility of raising, increasing the pay that we give to the position of mayor, I decided to start asking neighborhood leaders around the city of Des Moines their thoughts on the subject. Generally, the first question that they ask is, how much does a mayor get now? Most of them didn't know. And so when I gave them that response, they said, that's it? That's all? When I go into an explanation to them about the issue of a part-time, weak mayor system of government, it becomes obvious, very obvious to our citizens, that they do not view the position of mayor in that light. For us to even suggest that the mayor's position as part-time is ignoring the reality of his job. With close to 60 neighborhood associations, business and civic groups, state and national obligations all vying for the time of mayor, the term "part-time" is long gone in the expectations of the job. Being mayor of the state's capital city, an all-American city that is on the leading edge of so many areas nationally, is simply no part-time job. The term "weak mayor" is only descriptive in the form of government, but not in the importance of the job itself. While the city manager runs daily operations of the city, the mayor is involved in the daily public relations of the city. Make no mistake, our mayor has to market the city of Des Moines all the time. In our community, at the same time, for us, he's a strong advocate from the state capital to our nation's capital. Any individual who is seeking the position of mayor should not, should be justly compensated for the expectations of what, of that particular position. This should not be a position for only the wealthy, who can afford such a small compensation for what amounts to a full-time job if that job is to be done right. During the next two weeks, Des Moines neighbors will continue to canvass neighborhood leaders throughout the city, and if possible, take a formal position regarding this important issue at the next city council meeting. One thing is certain, if we expect the position of mayor to mirror our standing as a world-class city and all the honor it entails, then we should be willing to give appropriate compensation for that office. And I stand for any questions you might have. Oh, by the way, in case you ask, the question came up, how much? And at this point, with about 15 people I've talked to, the thought centers between $50,000 and $60,000, but that's just at this point so far.
Mayor, I'd like to move to receive and file this.
All right. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Received and filed. Thank you, Marty.
I would also like to acknowledge the work of some of our staff, Diane James Wells, for their work in looking at some comps in the industry, what other mayors around the Midwest and lakeside cities are. There is a grid. It looks something like this. I'm just showing the audience here. If, if you'd like to see that or have a copy of it, I can get you a copy of it, or the city clerk could get that for you. And I might suggest that we enter that into the record as well today, if, if that's a possibility. I'll move to receive and file that document that, that I know all the council have now.
Are you still looking for a motion, mayor, or do it?
Yeah, just-
I would move this to refer it to our personnel committee, and the personnel committee will report back the next meeting, and encourage Marty to get the information back to the personnel committee so we can use some of that in our decision-making.
And I would just add to that, like to add to that, Bob, if I could, please, is that we have to, the committee is a, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but it is a committee of the council, so it would be open, it'd have to be posted, it would be done in accordance with open meeting laws. Since it is, we're not really discussing personnel issues, we're discussing salaries here, so if the public wanted to attend, that would be appropriate. And I think it's very important that we have discussion about what's being proposed, if there is something that's proposed, and that that not wait and just come out at the last minute, because there's obviously a lot of impact, and we've got a lot of issues in the city, and I don't want to have the discussion being done and then the amount coming back right at the council meeting.
I think we need, in addition to compensation, to review the, the dollars that we get for our cell phones and, because I know a lot of people are exceeding more than $100 on a monthly basis on their cellphone costs and-
Well, if you, it needs to be looked in totality. It needs to be the entire compensation package.
Right.
Because I think everybody, I don't know for sure, but if, if you look at what everybody's eligible for, the mayor's position is up close to $55,000 as council members, it's through $43,000, I think it was, 40 to 43,000. So, you know, we spend a lot of time, I don't think anybody denies that, but if you look at compensation for what is technically a part-time position, I don't know that there are many positions in the state that part-time employees would get those type of benefits. And that needs to be taken into account.
Yeah, but, you know, other positions, you get a salary plus, which includes your benefits and that. So we need to look at, I agree, we need to look at the entire package.
Also, I think everybody needs to be aware that at the end of this year, some of those benefits are going away, so that it has to, probably ought to come before the committee as well. So while some of the things are going to take place between now and the end of '12, the end of '12, there's two very specific ones that will reduce all that compensation, at least $1,500, if not more.
Right. Six, yes. One, no.
Next item is item 33 from the Chair of the Greater Des Moines Sister City Commission requesting the adoption of Gaziantep, Turkey, Kapsibet, Kenya, and Akko, Israel, as new sister cities. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Matt Rosen, I have the honor of being Chair of the Sister City Commission at this point in time. Now, over the past couple of years, we have had three cities come to us and ask to be added as sister cities. The first was Gaziantep in Turkey, the second was Kapsibet in Kenya, and the third was Akko in Israel. When we talked about on the commission what the criteria would be for adopting a new sister city, we said the first prerequisite was to have a local constituency of folks who would be willing to work towards developing the relationship, the relationship. All of these cities meet that requirement. The secondary requirement that we talked about was the prospect of moving forward and, and opening up meaningful programs. Let me backtrack a second, tell you a little bit about the Sister City Commission. Des Moines had a Sister City Commission in some form for over 50 years. Our oldest sister city is Kofu, and that goes back 53 years now. What Sister Cities does is open up doors, has the ability to open up doors. It has not necessarily any programs of its own, it has the ability to introduce parties in one city to people of similar interests in another city. And as a result of that, it has the, you can never tell at the beginning of a new relationship where that relationship is going to go. You can never tell during the relationship what's going to happen to it. It kind of ebbs and flows. Examples, Nalcapán was a sister city, Nalcapán from Mexico of Des Moines for 25 years. It is no longer a sister city of Des Moines because it was impossible for the commission to maintain any kind of relationship and get any kind of feedback from the folks in Nalcapán. There was a time then that relationship was really very active. The council approved the donation of fire trucks to the city of Nalcapán in the, in the eighties. People within the Sister City program kind of come and go. At this point in time, we have five sister cities. We have Kofu, which has been for 53 years. We have Shijiazhuang in China, and that agreement was signed in 1985. We have Saint Antienne in France, which is over 25 years. We have Stavropole in Russia, and we have Katanzaro, our newest sister city in Italy. Most of those are going really very strongly. For example, Stavropole, within the last couple of years, there was an agreement signed by Mayor County, and a subsequent agreement signed by the Des Moines school system, setting out a plan of activities that would occur over a five-year period. We sent people to Stavropole last summer, as did the Des Moines School District. There is a group from Stavropole coming to Des Moines through the school system, being hosted by the school system, to look at various possibilities. There's a program called the Global Youth Institute. It's run by a teacher in the Des Moines school system, whose name is Tom Forsgren. It's associated, not with sister cities, but it brings students from different countries around the world together. One year, the group meets in Des Moines, one year, the group meets overseas. Two years ago, it met in Moscow, last summer it met in Des Moines. Two years ago, for the first time, it had students from one of the schools in Shijiazhuang attend their meeting in Moscow. They also attended the meeting in Des Moines. They will host the meeting next summer in China, so students from Des Moines and other countries of the world will have the ability to get together in China, in Shijiazhuang. The introduction of, of the, of the program to the Chinese school was as a direct result of the Sister Cities program. The last thing the Pioneer Hybrid had to do before it was given permission to build its research facility, was come up with a, a sister city. So Poe County is actually sister cities with Tielan in China. We asked that this new cities be adopted, and, and in the order in which they applied, and those were Gaziantep in Turkey, Kapsibet in Kenya, and Akko in Israel. Most of the people, I think, that are in the room, left in the council chambers, are here in support of those relationships. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question, Matt, I'm, I love the sister city relationship. Obviously, my concern is about, from the budget perspective, and taking on three additional cities in addition to what you've talked about, I think the budget is $16,000. It's not large. So there, it indicated that there would be some fundraising that would go on to help with the cost. Can you expand upon that?
Sure. One of the, one, one of the other-
One of the, one of the other conditions that we put forth before we accepted the idea of adding a city was, one, to make sure they understood that there were serious monetary restrictions on our part, and that they would have to play a role in raising, in raising funds. I think the Sister City Commission has a great record as far as living within, within its budgets, if you look back at that, and I don't see any reason why that would change. I'm sure you can have an unlimited number of folks that, here tonight, that can speak to being supportive of that concept.
The reason I ask is, I think whenever we have anybody out raising money on behalf of the city, that we need to be a part of that and have a plan in place so that we're just aware of what's going on and can respond.
Sure. Traditionally, what happens in the Sister City program is that fundraising is in response to a notification that delegation A is coming, or that Group B wants to go from Des Moines to, to the city, so, and not anything that's planned in a given year as an amount of money to add to the budget. That's one of the more challenging parts about the Sister City program. You don't exactly know the activities that are gonna occur over a given point in time, because tomorrow, we could get a phone call that would say, the mayor of Shijiazhuang, or a group from Shijiazhuang wants to come to Des Moines. Or, there is a group from Stavropole that's coming in the beginning of November, again, that's being hosted, in this case, by the school system. And so, the type of fundraising that's been done has been in response to those type of activities, and not, not, not something that says, we want, we're gonna need to raise fifty thousand dollars a year because of the addition of new cities.
Matt, let me ask you kind of a few questions. We've discussed this before at the Sister City Commission meeting, so as long as we're bringing this forward. How many members do you have now that are on the Sister City Commission that are from Des Moines?
How many members are, everybody except me, I think, actually, at this point in time.
Okay, so, how is the support going from our former friends and neighbors in the other suburbs?
How is the support, the suburbs are, it's my understanding that the suburbs are charged an amount based on their population in relationship to the due structure to join sister cities.
Right. Do you have any members, they're supposed to have a member that follows that up, so you're representing West Des Moines, and we probably should have somebody from Windsor Heights, and somebody from Urban Dale and Johnson and Ankeny, do they have any representatives?
Not at this point in time. And there are five representative positions from Des Moines that are currently open on the commission.
So, we need to work on all those as well, because we know that we've had some that have moved away, because part of the issue over time has been attendance to the meetings, and those that couldn't fulfill that, that obligation, shall we say, stepped away, and so we need to have people that have the time and have the commitment to do it. So, I'm just saying that we need to kinda work on that. Secondly, because I, I think that, Matt, one of the things, and as you know, you and I've gone on to a number of these places, and I think we've all appreciated the relationship that we have with our sister cities, and I think that we're interested in having valuable sister city relations. I would suggest to all of us, as we have the discussion, that we oughta, I would suggest we do it on a preliminary basis. I think we ought to follow up with each of these cities, we certainly have local folks, I hope, that are very supportive of it. Let's find out how their local governments are doing, and what the, the business interests and the other cultural on their side, because it needs to be a two-sided deal. We wanna know that we, they have support, if we're gonna be leaning towards support of, of the relationship, I'd like to hear from their mayors, and I'd like to know how they think it's gonna develop. You and I have talked about this with our Sister City Commission in the past as well, and I've talked to some others, and I think that, that we can do that, and I think there's some folks that are very excited about doing it, and we had that open discussion regarding Akko, the last time I was at the Sister City Commission, and it sounded like they were open to having that discussion and have their mayor kinda communicate back with us what they think the benefits are gonna be and how we can help each other. And that's the kinda discussion, I think, that we ought to have with both of these other cities, as opposed to just carte blanche, saying, let's move this whole thing forward, and it's done, and let's see how it works. These are expensive commitments, not only in time, but let's make them work and put a plan in place that makes a lot of sense in the future, and I think we have some folks here in the audience that are committed, committed to making that happen. I just, I'm a little hesitant to just say, okay, yeah, let's do it, without, with a pretty nebulous plan in place.
The first document that we would ask the mayor and council to sign for each city would be a, a plan, just like you said, that had required their mayor to sign first before it came to you and talked about programs in exchange of delegations in the areas of business, education, and cultural exchange. The same type of document you signed when Katanzaro became a sister city. We would anticipate nothing different for, for Gaziantep, for Kapsirbet, or for, or for Akko. As it happens, the Director of Cultural Affairs for the City of Gaziantep was in the United States as part of a mission that's being funded by the State Department a couple of weeks ago to look at diversity and how it's handled in American cities, and Mister Clark had the opportunity to speak with Mrs. Maringonas, and specifically asked the question about what areas of business interests she thought were possible, and her response was, one, that their sister city program is relatively new, it started in two thousand and five, the two today, they have fourteen sister cities, and the three was the same thing that I told you before, is that Sister Cities is a program that is geared towards making introductions of people with similar interests. So, if you start out with a base plan that says, over the next three years, we hope to exchange business delegations, education delegations, and cultural delegations, then you move towards opening up those type of doors. You started with Stavropole when you signed the document for the five-year plan. It moved to the Des Moines School System, they signed a similar one. So, they sent folks last summer with the group that went to Stavropole, and again, you have the return visit of the group from Stavropole coming here in November. So, that's exactly how it would move ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak to any of this? We might as well get some other voices if they would like to speak. If not, maybe we could figure out, or put a motion together. Sir?
Mayor, council members, my name is Tim Urban, two-fourteen Foster Drive. I'm here on behalf of the request by the mayor of Akko to establish a sister city relationship with the City of Des Moines. I have been to Akko probably eight, nine times in the last fourteen years, and other parts of Israel as well, but I can tell you that Akko is a small city, has incredible resources, but interestingly enough, at this time, it is embarking on many of the same transforming missions that Des Moines is. For example, it's moving into becoming a green city in terms of its sustainability and practices, and so there's a lot of ferment taking place within the city on those issues. Akko's an ancient city, it's a World Heritage UNESCO site, so it's, it's a major tourist attraction, and it focuses on trying to broaden its reach beyond just this domestic tourism from Israel to reach out to other places. As you well know, there's a fairly strong, vibrant Jewish community here in Des Moines, roughly three thousand folks that are directly affiliated with Jewish institutions, and many of those folks go over to Israel and travel, but there's a great opportunity for many others to travel, and they do, for the Christian sites that are in Israel. Akko, interestingly enough, is, is an Arab-Israeli city. Predominantly, the population is Arab, Arab Muslim and Arab Christian. So, it represents a very unusual demographic opportunity for us to learn about how people with different faiths and ethnicities are coping with living together in, in the country of Israel. Bottom line is that we are prepared, those of us that have a committee here, to join with Des Moines. Hopefully, we can muster, we will muster the resources to sponsor delegate travel and invite delegations from Akko to come here. There's a tremendous number of opportunities, I think, within the municipal arena, what the City of Des Moines does in different areas, whether it's emergency response, or whether it's fire safety or other things that I know Akko is interested in. Finally, Akko is a city that participates in a program that the Jewish Federation underwrites and supports. So, we already have an infrastructure of exchange with people from other Midwestern municipalities and communities with Akko and with the Western Galilee region of Israel. So, we are not coming here to look for a way of underwriting our travel expenses or to support financing delegations, but rather finding new relationships that we can build between Des Moines, both at the municipal and governmental level, and in the community at large.
Thank you, Tim. Yes, sir.
I do appreciate the time you're giving us here tonight. My name is Gerald LeBlanc, I'm over now at the Village View Retirement Home, and we have a petition, first of all, let's see, Councilman Coleman, would you pass this down?
Gerald, Gerald, I think it, are you talking to sister city situation?
Oh, no, no, I, I thought he was done.
Well, he is done. But hang on a minute, Gerald, we'll be with you. Are there other folks to speak towards the sister city relationship ideas? We're still on item thirty-three.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Ahmed Dursun, and I'm part of Turkish-American Society of Iowa, that's located in Des Moines and other cities in Iowa. I would like to give very brief information about Gaziantep, so I'm sure that you have got some information, but just to summarize that, the city of Gaziantep is situated where Mesopotamia considered the cradle of civilization, and the Mediterranean region meet on the Silk Road, and on the crossroads running from the south to north and east to west, giving access from eastern Mediterranean to far eastern and northern destinations. And based on these facts, the city and the region have been a place of human settlement, a trade center, and a transit stop since prehistoric times, and all has contributed to the current day importance to the region. And the city currently has about one-point-three million population in the city, and three million in total. And there are actually some facts about Gaziantep's economy. It is now the eighth biggest city in terms of economy in Turkey, and Gaziantep serving as the gateway, actually, to the Middle East for the Mediterranean, southeastern and southern regions, is a noteworthy city, not only within Turkey, but also in international markets. And for the rapid and successful development it has achieved using mainly its own resources. It's one of the unique cities in Turkey that uses its own resources to build up, to boost up its economy. And for this reason, it is now called Gaziantep Miracle, is mentioned at any platform, and many times by the Prime Minister of Turkey at any platform in the world, saying that the miracle city of Turkey, to do, it is boost in economy. And some, I would like to give very brief information about why, I mean, it's a big opportunity to have strategic investment, advantage of Gaziantep. I mean, it's easy access to Syria, Iraq, and other Middle East countries, and it is well-developed industrial and commercial infrastructure, abundant qualified workforce, free trade zone and organized animal husband region, budgetary center close to a very big, actually, seaport, availability of big number of truck fleets, and well-developed railway and air cargo systems, increasing use of natural gas, and highway, highway connections to Adana, Mercin, and Skendera that other cities expect to extend down to Iraqi border soon. So, based on this, again, we, I agree with the presentation that was done by Akko, actually, that we don't seek, again, any kind of funding stuff there. Our target is to have business, again, educational and cultural exchange between Des Moines and city, and we are here as Turkish-American Society of Iowa, who have been here like since two thousand and five, and doing lots of community events for Des Moines and all in Iowa, to, ready to support, to create this relationship. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor County, and honorable members of City Council, my name is Christine Pardee, I live at four-three-two-one University Avenue, and I'm speaking on you, speaking to you on behalf of support for moving forward and supporting the cities. As a former sister city commissioner, I can attest, I think that the importance of having a plan in place is something I think the sister city chair and then commissioners take very seriously. Now, there's been discussion in the past year about doing facilitated board and commissioner development, and really honing in on identifying what the commission can do that it may not have done in the past. I think with these particular sister cities, I think it will absolutely enhance the, the commission's work and help further amplify the City of Des Moines as being a really global player, and really acknowledging the importance of diversity in the community. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just one last thought, I guess, all we're really asking the council tonight for is permission to go ahead and approve putting together the type of document that you talked about, so the mayors of Gaziantep, of Kapsirbet, and of Akko have, know that Des Moines is serious about entering these, these relationships, and if they approve the document, then it would, then they would, it would come back to you. It's just everything's a two-way street, you're asking something from, from them as mayors, they have a right to say how interested is Des Moines in doing this. In the case of Gaziantep, they've been waiting close to two years now to take the next step.
Matt, I think that, at least, I'm only speaking for myself, because we're gonna have a vote here, but I'd certainly looking for good mutually beneficial arrangements, and I think that the step that you're asking that we take is prudent, and that we should send a letter to them and say, we are interested, how and when do we sit down, do we come there, do they come here, let's look at all the possibilities, and maybe it's a double exchange, maybe we do both. And we sit down with their leaders, as well as our local representatives that are interested in, in that, and we have a meaningful discussion and talk about our assets, their assets, how we can benefit one another, and move this sort of thing forward. You know, I, I think that we're talking about, as Mister Clark said, a very tight budget. We were hoping that Greater Des Moines Partnership, kinda for those who would know it as the Chamber of Commerce, folks would step forward and embrace this, for whatever reason, we haven't gotten quite the level of support that we would like, but there's a couple of us that serve on their board that maybe we could move them to rethink it in the future. But, in the meantime, I think we're looking for opportunities, and I think we do have members of our business community that do have an interest in, in, in relationships, and I, what I'm hoping for is, is that we get preliminarily open the discussion, say, we're interested, you're interested, let's, what's it look like? Christine pointed out very clearly, I think that that's what we have to do, we need to have that understanding, we need to know what that foundational piece is, it's not just about, you know, let's visit there, and you visit here, and let's have a good time, it's education, it's culture, it's business, it's people, it's language, it's, you know, how do we make this a better place to be, City of Des Moines, and the world a better place to live in, and I think that understanding helps us all to get there, but let's, you know. And I think that understanding helps us all to get there, but let's, you know.
I agree with that, but my comment would be that that should be on the basis of a document that begins to list specific things. So this is not something that carries on for another two years.
No, I would say we sign it, we send them a letter, we absolutely lay that down.
Can we, if we're all in agreement, and I just, I think it's a great idea, I think we should move it, and try and see if we can form these relationships. I think these are all great opportunities, and it's good to see people that are enthusiastic about doing something like this. So if there's no motion, I'll put the motion on to move forward with the request.
And I'm supportive of that. I think the important thing, though, from where I'm at, is the continued discussion around budget, and obviously, understanding that we have some real constraints.
Mr. Manager, a couple of thoughts?
The Sister Cities Program is a great program. You've already touched on all that, and for all the reasons you've identified. We have five cities now, you're talking about adding additional three. Here's the key thing from my standpoint, the ability of the city of Des Moines, as I think you've already noted, to support this at a level that is going to be necessary for success is going to be a challenge. I think Term Urban made the point when he was speaking a moment ago, that maybe there's other resources in the community that can be tapped. I want to suggest, I think that's really the key thing that has to be done here. If we're going to expand the program, number one, and if, and if, number two, we want it to be successful, I think we have to find ways to bring more resources to the table, because I think it's going to be a struggle for the city to support it at the level it really needs to be in order to be successful on a long-term basis. So it sounds like there's great interest in pursuing this idea, but I think as we do that, I think we have to be looking at some creative ways to make the program work better, bring some other resources to the table. As the mayor noted, we tried to do that about a year ago with the partnership. It didn't work out. Maybe some of those discussions need to be revisited to look for ways to bring other things to the table to make it work. I just, I just don't want to see us do it, and then not really be able to step up to the plate and support it the way it needs to be to be successful.
You know, before we vote, I want to compliment Matt and the Sister City Committee, because I think they've done an excellent job in the past, and I'm sure that as we go forward, they'll continue to do that excellent work. So congratulations, Matt.
And thanks to all the board, appreciate it. Okay, we've got a motion. Any further discussion?
Seven yes.
All right. Gerald, thanks for being patient. From Gerald LeBlanc, on behalf of citizens of Guthrie Avenue, to speak regarding stoplights, stop signs at East 25th Street and Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for the time that you're going to be giving me tonight. When I left this, oh, I want to give my name, Gerald LeBlanc, from Village View Retirement Home. And we have the largest retirement home here, we think, in the entire county. There are other retirement homes. We here have 22 acres. And when I left this afternoon, the manager and director, who was Brad Cole, C-O-L-E, patted me on the back. He said, I wish you the best of luck. We needed a regulation on this intersection for some time. And now I'm going to give this to our councilperson, Bob Mahaffey. Now, I want to also--
We've got a motion to receive and file on, please say yes.
Yes.
I wanted to look also at my map there.
Look at it.
This is Guthrie Avenue, right up in here, and this over here is Hubble. Just to the south, we, three blocks, we have a mighty, large eastern, Boulevard coming in there. And this is the section that we're thinking about. This block here represents where the freeway enters in. The entire street, according to the maps in the public library downtown here on Grand, it was laid out in 1920. And now that is 91 years ago. And at that time, half of the vehicles were Model T, Model A, or horse and buggy. However, from here over to the west, to East 14th, that was widened. They do have parking on one side. We have no parking on our side at all. This is, if you come out, you'll be amazed how narrow this street is here. And I might mention another thing, to the west, where Guthrie starts, I don't know why the city engineer did this, but he put across the street, all the way, speed bumps on a residential street, slowing down now to 20 miles an hour. You know, that, something like that needs to be thought out. Another thing on the east side, let's see, I want to get to the microphone here. Another thing on the east side, northeast 14th, all you have to do is press a button, and the, there's a large red light comes on. Sometimes children play with that, one or two people want to cross. We have eight lines there, eight lanes of traffic. And however, where we are here, we're not asking for speed bumps, we're not asking for, to halt the traffic. We know that stop signs do a great job. Where the intersection of Hubble and East Uke would come together, hundreds and hundreds of cars. I'm sure you have never had any complaints about the movement of vehicles there. So we are asking for stop signs also. You may recall, I think it was now three weeks ago, four ladies, 90 years of age, pulling out from a retirement home, this was over in West Des Moines. They hit broadside, and all four of them were killed. And we hope, this is a very busy intersection. Of the 300, many are handicapped, and all these things make, should be taken into consideration. If you want to hear some good war stories on World War II and Korea, go over there. Many, many veterans are over there also. All of these things should be taken into account. And so, in ending, we have very high hopes, because we know the mayor and the council here are very caring people, and so our hopes are very high. So it is now into your hands.
Okay, Gerald, just to clarify, you're looking for a signal or light or a stop sign at East 25th and Guthrie?
Only stop signs. We just want, signal lights stop the traffic. We want stop signs to keep the traffic moving. We want--
We kind of hope they stop at East 25th just for a second, don't we?
Yeah, southeast 25th, no, on 25th and Guthrie there, is where we want the stop signs.
Okay. Gerald, I also want to thank you very much for your years and years of work up at Woodland Cemetery.
Well, thank you very much.
That is a historic place, and you have continued to keep our eye on it and make sure that we maintain a focus, and I know that we all appreciate your work on that.
Thank you very much. I'm now in my 80s, and I just hate that so much.
You've earned it, though, Gerald. You're there.
Any comments or anything you want to say?
Should we have a motion to receive and file, and refer to the city manager, and then traffic and transportation folks, and get a recommendation back?
I was hoping we'd get that motion, yes.
Okay.
So will they be writing me a letter that I can share?
Will let you know, absolutely. We'll get the recommendation, we'll send you a copy of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Seven yes.
Item 35, from Lilis O'Malley, Olson, Manning, Pose, and Van Dyke LLP, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300, regarding the Waterfront Lodging Inc. proposal.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Dan Manning, 317 Sixth Avenue, City of Des Moines, representing Waterfront Lodging Inc. With me tonight, present with me tonight is, on behalf of Waterfront Lodging Inc., is Bob Patel, the president, Kayor Niyak, the vice president, and Ravi Patel, the director of development. Also with me tonight is the owner of the property, that's Riverfront Associates LP, and the representatives are Frank Levy and Mike McCree. We've asked to come before you tonight to visit with you about, really, where we are with the project on Water Street. What I would like to do is just take a moment, if I could, to run through where we are. We appreciate the opportunity to make a presentation to you at the last council meeting. But just to give you some perspective on why we're back here tonight, is looking at the documentation that I've been able to see, we've started this conversation about the development of this property back in August of 2009. It's been over two years now, and there, the effort that I'd like to emphasize tonight is the fine efforts that have been made by both the city staff, and also the developer to develop this property. As you know by now, the, initially, at the time that the developer came to this site, they thought they'd build a prototype Hampton Inn, one like sea out by the airport on Fleer Drive. But instead, through the conversation with staff, the efforts to try to make sure that the developer understood what you were looking for downtown, and their effort to try to have a class and quality project, you know, they came up with something more than just the prototype. If we can go to the-- Thank you. And what that is, is the east elevation looking, looking, in essence, from the river back at the, at the facility on Water Street. Now then, after that, after this prototype was developed, it was taken to the, you know, City of Des Moines Urban Architectural Urban Design Standards Board, and they recommended changes, and then those changes were implemented in this drawing that we have here, where there's an outside patio, and that's been added to this facility. Then there was discussion about whether the developer could add retail space to the site. And you're showing on this drawing that retail space, and they've made a commitment now, and we've provided that to your, to the city manager, that after this facility is up and running, after the hotel is up and running, to make a commitment to actually develop that space within 18 months of receiving the certificate of occupancy for that site. And I, what we're, I'm trying to run through these points so that we can reemphasize, emphasize and reemphasize the effort and the degree to which we're willing to work with the city to develop a quality development at this location. They talked about, would you agree to a minimum assessment agreement? Yes, yes, they, they've agreed that they would do so. Then there was discussion about parking, and the effort, once again, was to try to come up with something that where they could actually develop the site, meet the requirements in what the city is actually looking for, and still, you know, to have a development that both the city and that they could be proud of. We retained Gary Hammers, we put together this site, we're, instead of using paving, they relied upon permeable pavers, tried to do everything we could to make this site from a parking perspective workable. The, the next effort was to work in, Mr., you know, Ravi Patel is here tonight, obviously, and could visit with you further about this, but the effort to make it a lead development, that through his efforts has now become a reality as well. So what we're, what we're trying to focus upon is that, over two years now, with two, I think, the way Ravi says it, two and a half different development efforts, architectural renderings, and nearly half a million dollars of expense, they're really at a point where we need the city's support. We need the city's decision as to whether this project can go forward. We've spent a lot of time visiting about, during the council meeting tonight about the budget, and what we tried to lay out is a presentation is to just how much this particular site could enhance the community, and actually, in, as the council knows, in addition to the property taxes that this development would generate, you know, there's also what's commonly referred to as the pillow tax, what is, in essence, the significant amount of revenue over the next 20 years that this project could, can bring to the city. Just as an example, as, as you know, what we're looking for tonight is, in essence, an up or down vote, is what we've proposed, whether we can, whether the council can support what it is that we're proposing. And in essence, taking this, asking, directing that the manager enter into a development agreement with us to proceed forward with the project, because as, as has previously been mentioned, the financing for this project runs out at the end of the year. There's still a lot of steps that have to go, that we have to take. For example, there's an alley that's located, you know, in the interior of this block. That has, it has to be sold to the developer if they can go, in order for them to go forward with this project. We've, we've tendered our payment for that, in a good faith effort to show that we really want to move forward with this project. But it still needs to go back onto the agenda, it still needs to be approved by the council. Even if this is approved tonight, it still has to go back through the Plan and Zoning Commission. That's why we're here tonight and suggesting to you that we need a decision, because we don't know that, without moving forward right now, getting a development agreement together, getting back on the agenda before Plan and Zoning Commission, getting it back, a site plan developed and back to you, that we'll be hard-pressed to get that done by the end of the year, even if we get the favorable vote of the council this evening. So those are the things that we want to, want you to understand. From our perspective, even, as you know, we're asking for the TIF funds be committed to this project. The amount of taxes that this property generates now is approximately $60,000 per year. Under what we're proposing, in a very first year of the development of this project, the taxes that would be generated on behalf of the city would not change. And we see this as a very positive issue that needs to be addressed, and needs to be addressed this evening. Now, in a good faith effort to try to give you our bottom-line presentation, we made, we sent a letter to the, to the manager's office last week, and we talked about it with our client. And over the weekend, in an effort to address the concern that continues to be brought to us, and that is the density of this site, the density of this project. Ravi Patel sat down with his architect and did a rendering. Frankly, I received it on Sunday, I provided it to the manager's office today. And what I'd like to do is just, you know, run through that with you if I could. Now, we're not, you know, what we're asking for tonight is a decision on the proposal that we've made to you, and that is to be allowed to develop this, this property that we've shown to you, that we've talked about, with parking as shown, as set out by Gary Hammers in the presentation that we previously made. But we present this to you because we're not unsympathetic to what it is that you're looking for, what it is that you want to have long-term. And while we cannot commit to building a second hotel when we haven't even built the first hotel, when we're trying to get this done in the time constraints that, that our fin, our financing package presents us with, we are committing to build this site, but we are willing to look at what we could do on this site to address the concerns, and one word, the term that we continually hear is density. What we're looking at here is a drawing that shows the footprint of the building that we've been talking about, the Hampton Inn Hotel, along Water Street, along the south, along Market Street. The second would be at the northwest corner of this site. It could be a second hotel, it could be an office building, it could be an apartment building. But we recognize that the better that we do, the quicker that we do it, as to the, as to the hotel, the more likely it is-- the more likely it is that something could be done at that, at the northwest corner of this, of this site. So what we've done is shown these renderings of what could happen. This is the view from the Des Moines River, okay, the one that I'm looking at now. What we're seeing is structured parking next to, directly south of, the structure that would be built, the building that would be built at the northwest corner of the facility. And the next is a view from the northeast. And this is a view directly from the north. Again, while we're unable to make a commitment to do these things, we recognize that, from what we've heard and gleaned from conversations with staff, conversations with council members, conversations with the manager's office, we understand what it is that you're looking for, what your concerns are. But we want you to understand that we're ready to go with this project right now. The other projects that we've heard mention of concerning hotels are years away from what we know about them. We're ready to proceed right now. We think it's a very positive project, but we finally are at a point where we simply need to know whether we can have your support to make this project a reality.
Dan, thank you for your presentation. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Manning? Ms. Hensley?
I don't know if I have a question or just, I appreciate the efforts to try and come back with the additional plan this morning, or this afternoon. One question would be, I know that they're not making any commitments and they really have nothing lined up. It's just, conceptually, this is what could happen on that space. Would there be the ability to put a timeline on it at some point? I mean, and the reason I'm asking that is, you probably can't answer that right now. But if we are to move forward, understanding it has to go through P and Z and go through when it comes back to the city council, I would hope that there would be, that that would allow time to answer that question. I understand you can't answer it tonight, but hopefully, by the time it came back to the council, there could be an answer that says, yes, we would move forward with this other building. If we're not able to meet that timeline, that we would be, there would be a trigger or something that would maybe limit the amount of TIF or tax abatement, whatever the case may be. I mean, I, you know, you're showing the parking garage, and that's where we've all been, wanting to get that and get away from the surface parking. Unfortunately, it's on the second phase or the second building and not the first building.
Correct. And I, Mrs. Hensley, I certainly understand exactly where you're coming from with that question. I'm going to let Mr. Ravi Patel answer that question. But at least from my perspective, I believe that the, we're showing you this, not with the notion that, you know, it can happen tomorrow or even five years from now. It would have to be, it would have to be, from their perspective, that that's a, it's a concept of where they'd like to see themselves be, four or five years down the road, after they have a successful hotel, successful retail space, and then that would be the next step. But I'm going to let Mr. Patel speak to that issue.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us here again today. I appreciate it. Just to kind of answer your question a little bit here, in good faith, I spoke with my architect on Friday evening. I know this has been a big thing, getting density on the site, trying to make the site as dense as possible. So we came up with this concept, and it's, that's merely all it is at this point, is a concept and just something to show in good faith that if this first project is successful and we do well with it, this is something that can potentially happen. Maybe it'll be us building a hotel a couple of years down the road, but there's no commitments that I can make today for it. It's just merely conceptual and a good faith effort. That's all it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Not a problem.
I don't know how clear anybody's, you know, made it. So as long as everybody's here, I think that, you know, we went through a process a couple, three years ago, talking about where we're going with downtown, what's, you know, what's next. We did that, you know, big capital projects all over the place, everything from Wells Fargo Arena to the new library, to the Science Center, to a number of other places. And I think that one of the things we talked about and that our planning department had recommended to this council, and I think was approved, was talking about what's going to happen in your area, because we were putting a pretty sizable investment into that roadway and in the whole area, and what should it look like. And went through a number of our boards and commissions to give us sort of a recommendation on it. But they talked about a number of things. They talked about the size of the building in terms of the size of the lot and, you know, what the multiples of that should be, and I think you probably understand that. Talked about a number of other things, including the masking and how you define areas on it, whether it's on Water Street or it's on Second Street, and what do the edges look like. And I think at the time, we decided that, you know, those defining edges probably weren't parking lots, but they were actually building edges or something. And the plan that you just showed us a minute ago kind of does a little bit of that, I think, and gets us a little closer to what we're talking about, although, as you just said, there's no guarantee that that's ever going to happen. And I think that most of the quality materials, it looks like, you know, you've met, you know, that standard, you know, with that upgraded piece that you suggested. And I think that you meet or exceed the building height standard that we had originally talked about. So I think there's lots of positives that we're talking about. I think it's, you know, coming on this council to decide, where's it that we go, you know, from here, and how quickly can we move forward so you can make your decision and finish up, so you can take advantage of some of the opportunities. I still wish that we could put some of that parking, like we did on the tax credit housing properties to the north of you, where it's about halfway underground. It also allowed them to raise their properties substantially above floodplain levels and that anybody ever had any concern about water actually getting into any of the buildings. And I'm sure you guys have looked at all that and have taken some of that stuff in consideration. But it would seem, not going down a couple of levels, but, you know, it would make some sense to treat it sort of like, you know, they treated some of those properties, at least in my mind, I, you're the developer, but that, you know, you think about that sort of a use of Mr. Levy's property and create some of those edges and further opportunities for your property, because we think it is one of the key sites in Des Moines. And glad that Mr. Levy owns it and has held it and has been looking for a top-level design opportunity here. Those are my kind of thoughts moving forward. Ms. Hensley?
Maybe if I can make a motion here and see where we're at so that we can keep this moving, because I would agree, we at the council have not been involved from '09 or whatever it was that you first started having those contacts with everybody in the city. But, you know, we want to work with you. We're just not quite there yet. And, you know, the density, the parking, not having all of that parking lot. What I would recommend is, is my motion will be, is that we move forward with the project, but with conditions. And that, as you're going through this process with the other boards and commissions, that hopefully, we can figure out and address some of those yet, because I'm not comfortable that we're quite there yet. But also, I want to send the message that we're supportive of the project. We just need to figure out how to make this work. I know I'd even discussed, I think it was with Mr. Lillis a week or so ago, when we've been down to Austin, Texas, I think it was, or Dallas, Fort Worth, Texas, they actually had commercial buildings, I can't say that they were hotels, but they actually had the parking on the first floor, made it look like commercial space, even if you could have some of that in there. I don't know realistically if that's possible. I understand some of the other concerns you have. But I think that we need to continue those discussions, density, use of the space, less surface parking lot, and if we can figure out a way to make that work. But those would be the conditions under which I would move it forward.
Just to answer that a little bit here, it would be very, very difficult for me to change this plan. As Dan alluded, this is, plan's been changed three times now. I'm into it for almost three quarters of a million dollars. If I were to go back and completely redesign this project, I just don't think it would be feasible for me to do it. I mean, we're at a point where we've, we've had talks with the city for over two years. We've made a lot of changes to the project. We've tried to make it as great as we can and still feasible, though. I mean, in, we own hotels in Dallas, Texas. We own hotels in those areas, too. There's a certain price point that you hit in Dallas, Texas, and a certain price point you hit in Iowa. And we own hotels here. We own hotels in Dallas. We own hotels throughout the United States. And we just, there's no way for us to keep inching up our ADR to make these things more feasible and to incorporate them into our project. We've already incorporated a lot of other things that we're not asking assistance for, such as the move from the four-story stick to the six-story steel as well. I mean, the site plan alone that we changed, the landscape architectural plan, is going to cost us a significant amount more, because we'd been asked for suggestions to make the property much more attractive, which we're trying to do with the permeable pavers, the enhanced landscape plan, some of those items. The, I've committed to this retail portion of it, but I just, to be blunt, I can't make any more commitments, because I always liked, I'll never make a commitment I can't live up to, and my father's taught me that from a very young age. And so that, everything I've committed to, I know I can do. Further commitments would be a lot more difficult, but we need to have clear direction one way or another on which way to move with this project, though. Frank, which? Oh, one other thing, actually, I wanted to mention while we're up here. Dan had said that, according to this document, that the taxes would remain the same over, starting as soon as this project's done. Only the property tax would remain the same. I mean, there's a ton of other taxes and incentives and things you get every year from this project. Looks like year one economic impact will be ten, over $10 million. I mean, and if you look at just the taxes, aside from the real estate tax, would be $440,000 additionally on top of what's there now. So I just wanted to relay that information. It's not just that it's sticking at the 60, 60 in addition of all these other figures as well. And I've been hearing a lot of talk about the budgets today, and I know that this would be a great economic incentive to the community here.
So just so you understand, my recommendation is, is to move, to allow it to move forward with conditions attached to it. You still need to go to P and Z. You still need to go to the urban, so...
But can we elaborate a little bit on those conditions? Because we don't want to make commitments or agree to conditions that we don't think are feasible, though. And we've, the letter that I drafted and had, Dan and I had drafted together are all commitments and conditions we're comfortable with following through on.
I would suggest that we not get overly specific at this point, and I think that's been the issue that we've had. We've been, you keep coming back to the council and trying to negotiate it here at the council table. This is not the best place to negotiate those conditions, to be perfectly honest with you, because it would just be easier for us to say no. So I think that what we need to do is we allow it...
Part of the reason we're speaking at councils is because the conversations that we've had in private with the city are just not feasible, and this is what's most feasible and we can do, and that's why we're here again today. And we just, we can't waste any more time.
I'm going to look to the city manager and get a commitment from him right now, that we can, if we go forward with it and refer it with general approval with conditions, that we can get this resolved with, by the next council meeting. Is that a fair...
Can I ask you another question?
Yes.
Are you kind of, I mean, let's just be open and honest here. Are you looking to circumvent the Plan and Design and Plan and Zoning Commission and the Urban Design Review Board and say, this is all we're doing, we're not doing anything else? Because I'm not positive what they're going to say and what kind of recommendation they're going to send forward to us.
P and Z, I don't think we'll have any problems with P and Z. We're zoning correctly.
I'm just saying, are you suggesting, what are you suggesting?
No, no, no. We're not saying we were going to circumvent that. And we've incorporated all the changes that Urban Design has asked us to, so...
You've been to Urban Design Review Board?
I think twice now.
So you'd have to go back to P and Z, is that correct?
Can I try to clarify?
Please.
Okay.
Okay. The project has been, I think, reviewed by Urban Design Review Board, but when the council approved the sale of the alleys, your actions said that conveyance of those alleys was predicated upon review and approval by the P and Z Commission and the Urban Design Review Board of the final plan. Okay? So that's where that requirement comes from, and that's been of record for, you know, quite some period of time.
And the sale of that, those alleys is contingent upon your closing this deal and moving forward, otherwise?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Let me go on, because, so that's that part of it, okay? The other thing that's, in terms of process, that I know you know, and that is that you have asked for economic development incentives, tax abatement or tax rebates, and a variety of things I'm not going to try to go into here. But those require approval by the city council. And in effect, what the council's saying to you is, they have looked through this and they have their own ideas, that they've expressed, I think, pretty clearly, in terms of what the design expectations are of the project. And the crux of the issue here is, the council keeps saying they want to see more density on the site, and I think you keep saying, you're not prepared to do that. And so we're really at a loggerheads here. You can, you can send it back to me, but if the direction to me is to say, okay, let's ask for some design changes to get it closer to what you're asking for, what these folks are saying is they're not willing to make further changes.
This is it, yeah.
And that's really the crux of it. But that said, I am more than willing to sit down with you and look at changes and look at ways to make this thing work. You've talked about, it was introduced to me literally hours ago, the idea of building a second hotel on the site. I think that's terrific, but it's conditioned by the fact that you're saying it's really not, you're not ready to go forward, you can't make a commitment.
Really difficult.
So that kind of leaves us a little bit in the cold on that particular aspect of it. We can't really count that as a solution, if you will. So to Mrs. Hensley's point, if directed by council, I am more than happy to work with you in terms of looking at changes. But if that's the motion, then I think there has to be some acquiescence from you, and you've said here, no, but you would have to say, well, I'm willing to at least look at those kinds of things and come back here. Without that, we're really at sort of loggerheads on.
Yeah, sure.
I'm Frank Levy. I represent the owners. The history of this project goes back substantially before the two years that Ravi's been trying to put a deal together. It goes back more than 20 years, when my father and a group of investors purchased the project in conjunction with the 100 Court Avenue redevelopment. That was one of the spearheading redevelopment efforts downtown in that area. That produced a pocket park. It produced a structured parking lot. It produced a historic renovation of a building. That helped to kick off what has happened in the Court Avenue District. And my father was a leader in that and had big visions for this block. Fast forward 15 years ahead of that, and this project was again in play, when my father and a group of partners tried to put together a competing project that was ultimately awarded to George Sherman and Landor of Minneapolis, which consumed one block, although my father's concept had a three-block span. I believe that was in the late '90s or early 2000s that that attempt was made. Subsequent to that, shy of more affordable housing, there hasn't been an economic concept that works on that site despite repeated attempts, except for hotels. So we were delighted when, three years ago, HRC Hotels from Milwaukee came to us wanting to buy the site at a price that's approximately 30% higher than what we're talking to the Patel's about, about a upgraded Hampton Inn that met the, it met the full design overlay for that district, met the full design overlay for the district, which was in place then and still exists, which concerns things like facade materials. The, that developer, I would say, handled the process in a very clumsy, in a clumsy manner, and wound up getting scared away, probably in reality due to a lack of financing ability, which was excused on his part as city's objections were, really weren't any objections at all from the city. It was the developer getting cold feet. But nonetheless, that was three years ago, and we were very fortunate, not too long after that, to get a new developer to also do a Hampton Inn. But between those two developers, we had a very important conversation with city staff. And we said, whoa, we had no idea that the city was objecting to this hotel. We thought it was a use that the city supported. And the city said, we do. We said, well, then what happened? They said, I don't know. So we said, let's get together and talk... So we said, let's get together and talk about what it is that you're looking for in this site. And we had a pretty extensive conversation about what your goals were. And I got that you have a zone that you're trying to develop in a certain, with a certain look and feel, as urban as possible. And I never, ever got the sense that the site was being restricted to a parking restriction that didn't exist in the overlay. It was never part of the conversation. It's a new, it's essentially a extra, extra-legal zoning requirement that you're imposing that doesn't exist in the existing overlay. Now, it's absolutely true that we're asking for TIF, and it is absolutely true that you have your hooks into the project because of the alley. However, let's remember where we started. We started with Ravi wanting to build a hotel that met every aspect of the design guidelines as they exist today, that didn't require the alley, that didn't even require the TIF. And the conversation with city staff was, that's not going to be good for the area. We want something that looks better. So Ravi said...
Okay, let me stop you there so that we can go forward, because I think we've heard this and we need to come to some closure here. Let me give you a little bit of history because the Economic Development Group, which is the mayor, myself, and Chris Coleman, when we first sat down with you, it wa, and parking became an issue. And so that was the first time where we really were a part of the process. From that point forward, I know that there have been recommendations, conceptual plans as to how you could address it, but there have really been no commitments in my eye, and, you know, I'll let these others speak, but you really haven't changed anything since you've been sitting down, working with us at the council table. So what I would suggest is that you allow us to vote on having it go forward. The city manager has made a commitment. I don't know if we'll get any place, but he could take the next couple of weeks so that we, you can keep the process going, because otherwise, the only other option for you right now is, is that we make a motion to, which I don't want to do, that we just reject the project.
But you're rejecting it by imposing a $4 million parking structure. And my only alternative to pay the $60,000 in property taxes is to put more parking on it. It's so ironic.
But see, I don't, we don't see it that way. And I don't know what those options are, as I've said, as I've...
Parking structures are usually costed. We know how, exactly what it costs.
I understand.
I guess if I could add my two cents.
Sure.
I think the idea of moving forward, when you show the conceptual plan of a potential Phase Two, I think you've got a lot more buy-in up here than without Phase Two. Now, I understand the ramifications of business and you not being able to fund that, so you don't want to commit to that. I understand that. I think maybe what we're saying, sit down with the city manager, see if we can have the expectation that you build that, subject to, I mean, pick whatever conditions you want, your business income, your occupancy rate at the hotel you're building. Work with the city manager and see if you can't come up with...
Develop some triggers so that...
This is the expectation, but if something doesn't happen, if our Phase One doesn't work like we want it, then we won't move on to Phase Two. I think we're all understanding of you not committing to Phase Two if Phase One isn't successful, but our expectation is that Phase Two would happen unless something happens. And maybe sit down and have that conversation and see if we can move the dialogue forward in that direction, rather than you committing to a Phase Two that may not financially be feasible two years, five years down the road. And that's the sense that I get from the council, is that we want to move forward with kind of that expectation that something else happens.
I was going to make some comments very close to what you shared, so thank you for doing that. One of the things, and I do want to credit the development team, they did show me the drawings earlier today, and one of the things I told Mr. Manning, and I'll repeat it to you, I repeated it to the city manager, is that, you know, maybe there can't be a full-out commitment to this, but maybe there can be some tea to our agreement that allows for it. For instance, maybe, maybe we spend a couple of days thinking about segmenting the zoning and the approval from the hotel as opposed to the TIF request that's been made. And maybe in order to fully draw down the TIF in years five on, I'm making stuff up now, but, you know, in years five on, you don't get the full amount of the TIF unless there's additional density on the property or you've had some other solution to parking.
That becomes problematic, though, because this TIF is purely based on the fact that we were asked by the city to upgrade from prototypical Hampton to, there's option A, B, and C, and we, in our meetings with the city, we've gone to option C, and so this supports that only.
I, I get that.
If that gets taken away, my whole project fails, though.
I get that, and I'm, you know, I'm, first off, I feel like we've brought common sense to most of the things we've done, economic development, and we want quality. And as you do more development, the generation of taxes is greater, which might make for a difference in, in TIF as well. But, but, but I, you know, I want you to have some empathy for the position we're in, where I think right now the TIF request is in the neighborhood of $2.7 million towards this, and I, and I think that level of TIF is going to be granted only if we feel great about it. And I think right now, we only feel good about it. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I, just to add to that, we've done some other recent projects, not hotels, but I'm just thinking of a building that we just did the last council meeting, and the staff worked very hard to come up with a solution that ultimately was beneficial to the city as well. And I mean, you know, we up here, it's difficult to work through all of that, but I'm confident that the staff can sit down and have some of those discussions. And you better let your dad speak. He's dying to get up.
I want to thank the mayor and the council members to give us an opportunity to discuss about this project. I think Chris has, you know, made some suggestion that we can, we move forward and discuss that one. My only concern that we have is if we are committing the second project with, high-rise project with parking structure, which I think it's going to be as a commitment from both sides, which, you know, I haven't shared with Ravi on that commitment is, and...
And I just want, it may not be Phase Two. It may be something to do with the TIF, and I think that's where we get into the weeds, where, sitting at the council table, this kind of negotiation doesn't work. But when you sit down with our economic team and the city manager, I mean, we can go through, I mean, what are the possibilities to make this work for both of us? And that may be TIF, that may be a Phase Two, that may be a parking garage on the first floor.
Is that time that we can, you know, put a limit to it and see if we can get, get together and get this decision made, because we really need to get this one...
That's our expectation.
We had a commitment from the city manager that we'll sit down in the next two weeks, like this week yet.
I'm driving to Omaha tomorrow at 5:00. You can come along if you'd like.
You'd have two hours of uninterrupted...
I'll be more than happy to drive you there. I'll be more than happy to drive you there and come back. But my other, other question, you know, to the council member is, if we go with this, you know, the second phase, is there going to be additional TIF that is, you know, because the second project, it's going to be even higher as project, what we are showing it on the...
Can I just interject? I think that's a, that's a fair question, and I understand it completely. And, you know, we would be open to that, but as somebody said earlier, this is probably not the place to talk about numbers. But in terms of conceptual approach to it, that's, that's not an unreasonable expectation.
Okay. That's...
So my motion will be to move it forward with the conditions that we've talked about here, and I think that we have a clear understanding about, you know, what you're looking at potentially down the road, just conceptual plan, that you'll sit down with the city manager Wednesday? Will you still be...
We'll get together right after the meeting, and we'll pick the time.
Okay. And your deadline, drop dead deadline with the financial institutions is?
End of this year.
End of this year.
But we've got to make cover the seasons before that.
Right. So we've got...
A plan.
Windows closing here.
Thank you. Thank you for the discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion. Any other ideas? Seeing none?
Seven yes.
Thank you.
All right. That moves us now, I think, back to item 43. Item 43 is contract, approving a contract in a bond with Oakview DCK LLC. Doug White, president, and permission to sublet on fire station number one replacement, Council of Communication number 11-643.
Yeah.
Anybody here to comment on this project?
My name is Nate Stewart. I'm with Oakview DCK. I'll be the project manager on this job. Our office is located, my office is located in Milwaukee, and I personally live in Urbandale. So I'm just here for any, to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay. Any, any questions?
I'll move. Seven yes.
All right. Could we have a motion to adjourn the city council and reconvene as board of health? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. We now sit as board of health. Item one is approving the legal department to proceed with court action seeking the authority to abate the public nuisance at the following locations. A is 1619 Franklin Avenue. It's a fire damaged main structure. B is 1827 Franklin Avenue, another main structure. C is 4026 Glover Avenue. It's a main structure and an accessory structure. D is 2727 Linden Street. It's a main structure and a garage. E is 1825 Ninth Street. It's a main structure. And F is 739 Twenty-Fifth Street. It's a main structure. Anyone here to discuss, give us input, ideas, stays on moving forward? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Moved.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Item passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn on this?
No. Before you adjourn.
Before we adjourn the board of health?
No.
Or in the...
The meeting.
Okay. Our city manager wants to speak during the board of health. Sir, go ahead.
Board of health, board of, I want to formally recognize James Wells back there, our new HR director, and John Newman, our new IT director. Please stand up, and if you would all welcome them to the...
Okay. Motion adjourned? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. We sit adjourned. Thank you all for attending.